To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you for coming. Before we start the public comments section, we're gonna have a little shift in our schedule, so I'll let Mr. Neef explain.
So, to begin the meeting, actually, we're gonna begin with our discussion of student activities fees. So, we're gonna move those items from recommendations from the superintendent, which is, A, student activity fees, and B, FY18 budget transfer requests, up to the beginning of the agenda. Our purpose in doing that is we thought there might be some public comments right in regards to student activities fees, and we wanted people to be aware that the recommendation of the superintendent, recommendation of myself, to the committee is gonna be to not have that student activity fee this year and to waive it. And we wanted to have that discussion prior to any comments on that specific issue. But we're more than willing, obviously, after we have that discussion, to take any public comment in regards to the issue. Or if someone felt strongly that they wanted to see the fees stay in place and not be waived and not have them removed from the FY18 budget, then we would also be willing to hear those public comments at this time as well. So, if everybody's okay with that on the committee, moving that topic up to the beginning?
So, even just to go a little bit with that, if anybody after our discussion, right before we vote, would like to comment, I'd like to allow them to do that before we vote at all. Everyone okay with that?
Yep. So, we'll have a discussion prior to any public comment, prior to the committee taking a vote on those issues. Okay. So, the reason and the rationale for my recommendation on that issue. As part of our FY18 budget, the committee voted to create a $50 user fee for all student activities at the elementary and middle high school, as part of a package of fee increases. Our goal was to raise $10,000 through that fee. I've linked a copy of the approved fees from last year's budget in the presentation. If, Meredith, we could get it up on the screen, that would be great, 'cause I wanna talk about that a little bit. Sorry, Meredith.
That's right. Do you know the name of it?
Yeah, it's just, it's the link under student activities. In the, in the, in the...
Mine isn't linked. Okay.
FY18 user fee schedule.
Yeah, FY18 user fee schedule might be the official name.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, the internet is so...
So, last year, the fees that we instituted were, we increased the, who was just up there?
Hey, you could, you could start with it anyway.
I'm having slow kind of...
Okay. So, we started with a, we increased the athletic fee from $90 to $150 per sport, with a family cap of $750. The goal was to increase the revenue through athletics by $22,000 and offset the athletic budget by $22,000. We increased the parking fee from $10 to $50. We were gonna offset graduation expenses through that increase in the parking fee. The goal was to have the offset be the amount of $3,750. We increased the intramural fee from $50 to $200. The goal was to raise $7,500 and make the program self-sufficient. I'll skip the club fee for a second. And we also created a fee for pre-K, $12 a day. Now, the other fees that we raised, so the athletic fee was a fee that already existed in which we just raised the fee. The parking fee was a fee that already existed in which we raised the fee. The intramural fee was a fee that already existed in which we raised the fee. The pre-K fee and the, the club fee, the activities fees, were actually, these would be new fees. These would be things that in the past were not instituted. And the, all the other fees, so the pre-K fee, the intramural fee, the parking fee, the athletic fee, those fees have all been instituted and we've begun to collect them. But we've had a real concern about the activity fee, and I personally have had a real concern, that the activity fee might actually lead to less students participating in clubs and activities. And last year, when we made these decisions, when the committee voted this in February last year, you know, the reality is, we faced a grave situation. We faced a deficit of $1.2 million, and we were trying to find every way in which we could to meet that $1.2 million shortfall.
Without losing staff.
Without losing staff. So, if you remember through those presentations last year, I actually, our original presentation was, here's, I believe the exact number was $301,000, which we can raise that doesn't eliminate any staff. And all these fees were included in that package. And then we brought those fees back again to another meeting. We actually looked at it a third time before the committee voted them. But when we had those discussions, part of those discussions, we also eliminated, I'm gonna make connection here, some coaching positions. We eliminated a couple of coaching positions, like, for example, JV field hockey. And when we eliminated JV field hockey, the rationale was, well, we really haven't had enough students to have a JV field hockey team for many years. So, we've been paying a coach, who's been assistant to the varsity coach, but we haven't had the students to run the team. So, when we made these decisions, we said, we're trying to make decisions that are financially sound, that makes sense, that have as little impact on students as possible. Our goal here is not to decrease participation. And I can specifically remember myself saying that several times during those discussions, that the goal here is not to decrease participation. And my sense, from feedback from the community, from teachers, from parents, is that the institution of this $50 fee for student activities, that there's a real possibility that that may lead to less students participating in activities. And I just can't think of something I want less than to have fewer students participating in activities in all grade levels, from the running club at the elementary school, to the middle school drama club, to the math team at the middle high school. You know, and we can name all what all the clubs are. There's a tremendous number of activities and opportunities in which we offer students after school. And those opportunities are part of the educational experience of our students. I'm a firm believer that the students who, the student who's involved in school activities is more successful in school and learns a lot of life lessons. You know, as a coach, I used to always talk about the value of athletics and learning life, life lessons through athletics. And if we're gonna institute a fee that, in my mind, may decrease participation, and there's a concern that it will decrease participation, I have a concern about moving forward with that fee. Now, the next piece of that is, when we look at, the reality is, the fee, the goal of the fee was to raise $10,000. And $10,000 is a substantial sum of money, but it's also $10,000 when we're looking at, you know, a close to $22 million budget. And yeah, we had to make really tough decisions last year. We're looking at everything we could do to make those tough decisions. But when we look at this year's budget, in essence, we've found ways in which we can fund that $10,000 that we were gonna gain through the student activity fee without having that fee. And my recommendation to the committee is that that would be the appropriate thing to do at this time. And I'm willing to take questions from the committee as to, well, in a second, I'll detail how we're gonna, where the $10,000 is gonna come from. And then, so I want the whole community to know that we didn't just find money, we just didn't say, "Hey, we have an extra $10,000 that we can put to this," that the money's really there, and we're gonna make some very specific transfers for some line items to cover that fee. And I want the whole community to know that. But I mean, I do think it raises, you know, I can see a member of the committee have a question in their mind, anticipating your questions of, "Well, what's gonna happen next year?" You know, this is $10,000, and we have to address this $10,000 next year. And maybe we need to maintain this fee because it's just gonna be part of our structure to make us feasible and sustainable over time. And some of the decisions we did make were the goal of, you know, we made some decisions last year where we, our stated goal was to try to create a school system that's going to be sustainable over time, so that we don't have to have a continuation of cuts. And this $10,000 is gonna be a small piece of taking away from that sustainability. And I could see someone making that argument. But ultimately, I believe that this is a $10,000 that we're gonna have to solve and can solve through our budget process going into, for FY19, and FY20, and FY21, as we go forward. Again, saying that $10,000 is a small piece that we, as a committee, will have to work towards solutions for. And maybe at this time, the community, myself, the school district, teachers, are not supportive of the student activity fee as a way to generate these $10,000. So, my recommendation is that the committee vote to not institute the fee this year. And then, obviously, as we go forward to future budget cycles, we'll go forward in future budget cycles and look at things that we need to do and make the decisions we need to make. But at this point, I feel like there is, the money exists within the FY18 budget to allow us to not institute the fee during the school year. So, where, where's the money coming from? So, Meredith, if you can just slide, slide down a little bit on that, the next slide. So, we've actually broken this up into two recommendations. So, Brad actually has a series of other transfers that are gonna need to be made for the FY18 budget. So, we have all the transfers as one motion, and then this, this decision is one motion in terms of making a decision on waiving the fee. But I wanna put out there where the $10,000 to cover the student activities fee would come from. So, first, I have a travel stipend. So, I would, I would take a reduction in my personal travel stipend of $1,000. We have a custodial uniform stipend. When the budget was made last year, we had one more custodian than we have this year. We actually had a custodian retire, which we did not replace. The $1,000 is the uniform stipend for all the custodians. But when the budget was built, we had one more custodian than we actually have this year. So, there's an additional $1,000 in that stipend line item, because we have one less custodian. This summer, we employed painters. The painters are in the budget. The painter's work is done. They have no more work to do. But when the budget was completed, there was $649 left in that budget, so that money could be transferred to support the student activities fee line item. We had a summer program that runs over the summer that we helped support, which we've talked a little bit about, which is PCC. So, we had the PP, we had PCC this summer, and, and that program is over. And there is $919 left in that budget line item, so that money could be transferred over. So, you see a theme here. They were taking money from places where the money's already been expended, and there's some additional money in that line item. And small amount, small amounts of money. We had a groundskeeper position. As the committee knows, the groundskeeper's position went vacant for the first five or six weeks of school. So, from that line item, from that salary line item, because we were not employing anybody in that line item, there's a little extra money. So, we'd be able to transfer $1,741 from that line item, from the groundskeeper's salary. Again, the groundskeeper's not losing money. We're not taking his salary. He just didn't, no one earned that money in the first month of school, or the first month of this, the fiscal year, in July and August. And then the last one, Brad, I'm gonna let you talk about the workers' comp yearly expense line item.
Yep. So, that goes into the discussion we had at the joint school committee meeting in regards to the actual bill that we get. We put a projection in. We put 15% this year. Bill came in around 12. That's a cost share breakdown. So, on this specific account, we actually won on this year. We were less than what, bill came in less than what we projected. There was two last month, though, or the last time we actually made the adjustments in vehicle insurance and in property liability, that were actually short a couple thousand dollars. So, that was one we lost on, that we already made up and figured out the solution for it last time. So, this, again, is one-time money. This isn't a reoccurring savings we're gonna have year to year, especially if we go to the joint account for that. And that way, neither side, the school or town, loses wings on either side of that.
So, all the, all that lines, all that adds up to $10,000. So, those would be the transfers we'd be making. Those transfers would be made into the stipend line item for student activities, 'cause the $10,000 we were gonna raise from the fee was gonna go directly to offset the stipends that the advisors are paid to run those clubs and activities after school. So, these line items would be transferred to, I believe, the high school line item. That's just where Brad had deducted it from originally. And that's where the $10,000 was gonna go if we raised it through the fee. So, within this budget, it, it's, fiscally can be done for FY18 to make these transfers and to not have to institute a student activities fee for any of our students in grades K through 12. So, that is my recommendation to the committee.
So, before we make a motion or have any discussion, I'd like to ask if there's anyone from the general public that would like to add a comment. Very welcome to. Just come on up and recognize yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Mary Willett. I am a teacher at the middle high school. I thank you for giving me this opportunity, because I know that it's a little different. And I believe Mr. Neef did a wonderful job talking about the, the budget end of the, the activity fee. But I'd like to offer an additional point of view, if you don't mind. And I promise I will be brief. When I first heard about the $50 fee that was going to be assessed, I assumed that it wouldn't include the two clubs that I'm mostly involved in, and that's Best Buddies and the Unified Special Olympics. Because I thought, you know, how could $50 be assessed to clubs that work on inclusion? Best Buddies is based on friendship, building friendship between students with intellectual disabilities, with students who are, who do not have intellectual disabilities. So, how could we possibly say, you know, pay a $50 fee and we'll find you a friend? Or pay a $50 fee and you can be a friend to someone? Now, obviously, I know that that's not how it's set up, but it's hard not to imagine the perception of that. The other group that I am involved in is the Unified Special Olympics, and it's very similar to Best Buddies. It's bringing together students with intellectual disabilities and pairing them with students without disabilities, and bringing them together with a common goal, and that's to be on a team. And I can assure you that some of the students who've had this opportunities, their paths would not have crossed if not being part of this club. So, when it looked like it was going to be assessed to my students, I thought, "All right, I'm gonna have to rethink this then." I always strive to have my students be accepted into the community just like everyone else. I work really hard to make sure that they're not feeling a sense of entitlement because of their disability, which is very common with people with disabilities sometimes, unfortunately. So, I thought, "Okay, if the whole school body is going to be assessed this, then my student should be as well." But then I thought some more. And I decided that, well, it just really bothered me. Because as I said earlier, I really think that the students, and my students and the students in the general population, really benefit from this activity, these activities. But I also think it's more than just the people in the club. I honestly believe that their families benefit from it. I believe that the whole school community benefits from it. And I really believe that everybody in this room benefits from living in a community where inclusion is the norm. So, I was, I was really, you know, I really thought about that. But then I thought, it shouldn't be just my, my groups that are, that are part of this. Because I thought about the environmental club. And I thought about all the hard work that the students in the environmental club do for the school community. I wish you could see how hard they work with their recycling club. I wish you could see how hard they work at their beach cleanups for the community in which they live. Then I thought about the student council group, which Jenna is a member of. And I thought about the Crusader Fest and the amount of work that was put in to bring that amazing event to life. And that's just one thing that they do. But student council brings the community into our schools, and it brings our students the awareness to give back to the community. So, what they do is so service-centered. And I thought of, and it's a lot longer, but I'm gonna keep it short. I thought of so many of our clubs, so many of our clubs are service-based. They're, they're working for the community. So, yes, there's the financial component of it, but then there's the, what are we teaching them about their community? I love Carver. I know I'm not a resident, so I couldn't speak in the first part, but I feel like I'm a resident, because I spend a lot of time here. And like so many of the other club advisors, you know, yes, we get a stipend. But if it's thought that the stipend, in any way, shape, or form, pays for the amount of hours that we put in, I don't think anybody would think that. So, and the, the last thing I would just like to say is that when this really came to fruition or, and understanding, because I know it was talked about last year. But this year, when it really came to light that this was happening, it coincided with the Carver Cares candlelight vigil. And I couldn't help think the timing could not have been worse. You know, as Mr. Neef said, I mean, keeping the kids involved in things is far more important. And, you know, the opioid epidemic is just so tragic. And this, you know, having kids involved is one of the things that we know that helps. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
The only, the only, thank you, Mary.
(applause)
The only thing I'd add on to what, what Mary had to say was that this actually did become an internal discussion for us, 'cause several people came forward and said, "Well, my, my club is 100% service-oriented. We're gonna charge students $50 to be involved in a service organization." And my response, and we, we met with the high school administrative team and had this discussion, and my response was, as I said in the beginning, I believe each one of these clubs has a tremendous value. Mary just made a pitch for her, the two clubs she's involved in, and then expanded it out to talk about some other clubs. I think each of the club's advisors would come in and tell the positive value that it has for the community, the positive value that it has for its students. And we said, if the committee decided to have a fee, everyone has to pay the fee, because we can't, I, as a superintendent, can't be saying, "This club has value A, so they don't have to pay the fee. This club has value B, so they do have to pay the fee." I said, "We, the, the committee decided that there would be a fee for activities, and everyone would have to pay the fee." The only exception that we had come up with was actually two. One was National Honor Society was gonna say, doesn't have to pay the fee. And the reason why is, as an actual national organization, their charter does not allow for a fee to be charged of more than $20 to be part of National Honor Society. It's part of the national charter. And we said, "Well, we weren't gonna have them pay 20, and everybody else pay 50." And we decided the captains' council wouldn't pay the fee, 'cause we said the students are already paying the athletic fee to be members of their athletic team. And we felt like that was almost like a double fee. Though, you could argue that with a lot of things, that one could've been more controversial. But those are kinda the two that we said weren't gonna have to pay the fee, but everybody else was gonna have to, you know, to pay the fee. Because we couldn't make that value judgment of, this, this activity has this value, and this one has this one. So, ultimately, if the committee decides to institute the fee, we believe the fee needs to be instituted in, to all clubs' activities.
Any other comments from the public on this topic? So, seeing done, I'd accept the motion?
I'll make a motion that we eliminate the student activity fees for FY17 and 18.
Second.
So, motion made and seconded. Comments, questions?
I guess I, I'll start off. I guess my first thing is, I, I think putting the $10,000 back into, back into the students is a no-brainer. All right? That, that's not a question. I just think it is something that we all have to be open to, that this is, the majority of this is one-time money. So, this problem's not gonna go away. And I think if we all recognize that, we all recognize that. And that doesn't mean that for 17, 18, we shouldn't figure out the best way to use this $10,000. Scott, thank you very much on the, on eliminating your $1,000. I think that was, I, I, when I read that, I said, "Wow," you know, "Scott again, stepping up." So, thank you. But, I mean, the workman's comp money. I mean, Brad, am I safe to say that's certainly one-time money?
Yeah. It could've came in. We could've been short on that line item.
Right. So, so the situation, six weeks, seven weeks into the school year, is that we do have it, so let's figure out the best way to give it back. I think we're kinda teetering a little bit on the who deserves it more, and that was kinda dicey to me. I think that wasn't where we were intending this to go.
No.
Because there were some other groups that had fees increased. And, you know, I don't wanna sit there and say that they're any less important, you know, on the football field than they are, you know, in student council, or whatever it ends up being. So, I don't wanna go down there. But I do believe, you know, that we're, if we, if we do this for 17, 18, you know, I'd be proud to see that those people are able to, you know, stay off, having to pay the $50. But I just want everyone to really understand that this is one-time money. And, you know, we're probably gonna be sitting right back here, talking about something else next year. So, it's just not gonna go away. You can't just find it all the time.
And, and to your point, Andrew, the only, the only thing I'd like to, in terms of all the fees in general, is, and maybe this isn't right, but for whatever reason, it's become, it's become a common practice or accepted that there's a student athletic fee. There are very few school districts that don't have one. There's a couple that don't, but most, most do. And I, again, not adding the value judgment piece into it, but it's become more of an acceptance of that's, that's part of, of operating procedure. Again, not saying it's, not saying it's right.
Not that they wouldn't have a fee, but their fee increased. So, at the end of the day...
But our fee is still lower than the majority of schools in southeastern Massachusetts.
I do understand that, and that's great. I was just more getting at, we do have a fee.
And, and I would agree that the intention wasn't to place value on one person, one group over the other. That was my whole point of the conversation, is I don't want it to become this, this to become a value.
Sure, I agree with that.
I don't, I do not want this to become a value judgment discussion of who pays fees and who doesn't.
I would, I would just like to ask, Scott, on that, after many, many months of discussions on this, that when we did this, we knew that this wasn't a permanent solution for anything anyway. We knew that this was just a piece that we were trying to put together to try and fill that $1.2 million deficit. And we were trying to be as creative as we could without releasing any staff. So, we knew when this was implemented, that this was something that we were gonna look at again anyway. So, we weren't, this wasn't definite in the future as it was. We knew that some of the fees would increase, and this may end up staying. But we knew that this was something we were gonna revisit. And from my perspective, for us to be able to revisit it this early and to find a way to solve it, is we'll have to look at it again anyway. But for now, it's a solution that's definitely beneficial from my perspective.
Sure. Did we, do we, no, I know, Mike Schultz isn't here or anything. Do we know if the increase in athletic fees has impacted the fall numbers?
The fall numbers were down. I don't know the exact number. And I don't know if we can tie it back to 100% based on the increase in fee.
I think it was 17.
Yeah. So, I think there was 17 fewer students participated in fall athletics.
Okay.
But that would be a legitimate question to say, "Did 17 less students participate because there was an increase in a fee?" To my knowledge, there wasn't anybody who directly came forward and said, "I am not participating because there is a, the fee went up to $150." So, no, no one reported that. Doesn't mean they didn't think it, but no one reported that.
My understanding was, a lot of it came from the not allowing football players to play.
Yeah, that, the other change is, we did, the other change we did have, which, again, for that 17, is this year, there was a decision to have our eighth graders not play varsity football. So, or JV football. So, our eighth graders are actually in an agreement with Town Pop Warner. All of our eighth graders are playing on a Town Pop Warner team together, instead of coming up and playing JV. People had had concerns about some of the physicality of our eighth graders playing JV football, and that they were facing off typically against ninth and 10th graders, and maybe kids who were just bigger and stronger than them. So, for that reason, there was a decision, we're in an, actually, an agreement between the school and the Town Football, to have our eighth graders play together for Pop Warner. So, that would be, that's part of the 17 fewer kids participating.
Okay.
Yes. I was concerned about this issue, and I appreciate the lengths that you went through to, to find the money somewhere in the budget. I heard a lot of concerns from students, from parents. They were concerned that kids were not gonna be able to participate because of the fees. So, I know that personally, when I go home, and when I tell my daughter, she's gonna be absolutely thrilled, because she knows kids that weren't gonna be able to participate. So, like everyone has said, this is one-time money, but I think that we're using it in the best way possible. And I'm, I'm very thankful that we're able to. And I just think it's, it's, it's great that we have such a community that cares so much about their kids and about having these activities in these clubs to keep them engaged. So, I just wanna say thank you.
Well, I think, just to come up on that too, 'cause we did, we did discuss this a lot. And I think possibly where we fell short, and this isn't to anyone, I think it's to all, to everyone involved in it really, is that it wasn't really communicated as well as it could've been, as to what the intent was here. Because part of our conversation was that we wouldn't exclude people. And if there wasn't a financial situation where somebody wasn't gonna be allowed, then we, we would definitely find a way to make that happen. And, and I just don't think that that was conveyed very well at all. So, I would say that that was a shortfall in, in part of this decision-making process of what we did, that people weren't truly aware of, of exactly how it was gonna roll out. But again, I, I agree. I think being in the position we're in is a good place to be.
Absolutely.
You've all voiced my concerns. You know, I'm a fan of sustainable budgets and not using one-time money for things, but, but for year after year. But I like the fact that we're gonna, we're gonna try and reinstitute these and, and we take away the fees so more kids can participate. So, this'll be a challenge for us next year to keep it in place. So, I think we're up for it.
Absolutely.
Anything else? So, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous?
Okay. So, just to link those two items together to make it a final piece, the next item on the agenda will do the FY18 budget transfers, which would officially transfer the money that we just discussed in the previous item into the student activities accounts. And then Brad has some other transfer pieces as well, so he just wants to review that, all the transfers with the, with the committee. into the student activities accounts. And then Brad has some other transfer pieces as well, so he just wants to review that, all the transfers with the, with the committee.
Meredith, can you open up the Excel?
Is it in the backup?
Yeah, it's in, it's linked in the backup.
And I color-coded it for you guys too this time, so. You can scroll on that, Meredith. You can scroll down on that.
I'm going to open it.
So I'll start with the yellow ones just because they're on there. The yellow ones, I color-coded because that represents changes in the superintendent's office. And what that basically is, is Scott being a new superintendent has actually a three-year new superintendent induction cohort.
Three years.
Three years. Well, and this is now the second year of three. That expense was considered a one-year expense last year, we thought, not FY 18 that we're in. So that is an adjustment we're going to have to make. That's being made up through dues and memberships line and also the superintendent supplies and materials to make up the $3,000, $3,074.
And we'll make sure we budget for it next year.
Yep, it'll be in there without a doubt. And there'll be the last year of that. The next light blue line is the $1,000 from Scott's in-state travel. And if we keep scrolling down to number... Yep, 52 is the next one. So this, all these colors start to show the change that we made from the general middle school line item into all of the individual middle, high school departmental accounts now. So this first one though, that is green, that is the teacher salary for preschool. Desi had a function code change. They had to change to 2305 to 2310. So if you were to scroll down to line item... Yes, 72. That matches up. So you'll see the $139,000 transfer from one line to the other. Same thing with the orange. You'll see line 54. It's just over 1.1 million. That was the middle school lump salaries. Those get broken down into the four orange that you see that represent all the individual departmental lines. In the middle, which is the blue, you'll see the middle school special ed. That's just getting bumped into the high school sped. One thing you'll see on these that I have not done yet is the full change in the account description. Those lines will read MHS soon enough. I just have to go in and make the, the adjustment on it.
What line is middle school?
Middle school is 58, 57 and 58. It's not showing on here, yeah.
It's not showing on yours, but.
Pardon the technical issues.
All right, and if we keep going... 240? 196? Okay, one at 173.
Yeah, 173, 174.
Yep, 173, 174. These are two key ones again. So what we're doing here is the first one, 173, that's our special ed transportation contracted services. I'm bumping another $5,000 into that. And this actually is a estimate on what our overall rates are going to cost right now, so this will cover that line item expense. One thing I'm trying to do is I've been posting for a route that we pay right now, roughly $375 to $400 every Friday and Saturday. I am begging and pleading one of our drivers to take that route, just so we cut that cost well below half of that. And that will impact that number significantly. But until I have a driver and a monitor onboard, we still have to contract that one out. Homeless transportation, Desi now requires that's broken out from special ed contracted services. So you see, I'm looking to add just under $10,000 there to make that line item actually a whole $10,000. And as kids come in and they move and they're classified as homeless, we have to do a cost share from the residing district they're, district they are in to our current district that they reside in. And that can go either way. They may move into Carver from Bourne, Plymouth, Wareham, wherever it may be. Or they can move from Carver to one of those, and we still have to cost share that out. And you'll see in line 196, the advisor stipends for the high school. That is where the original $10,000 was dropped from during the budget, and this will be adding the $10,000 to that line item. Line 215 is the groundskeeper. You'll see that we have the money that's being split. A portion of that is going to offset other various accounts, but another portion of that is to go in to offset the $10,000 stipends. And that was it. One other one I want to make, just to make a note of, is line 243. On that, actually, I don't think this is a, a area that we give enough credit to. We actually got hit with a bill. I'm never happy to get a bill. But this bill actually is for AP programs that we're able to offer through, I believe, is it Middleboro?
Reed's.
Reed's, yeah, Reed's Collaborative. And they actually offer our students online classes to take AP exams. So I thought that was a good bill to get. So that'll be added into the budget as well next year. That number went up drastically from the previous year. I know when I look back on my records, I think it was roughly around 2,300.
Well, I can, I can address why that change happened a little bit. It's not, you know, ultimately, it actually comes as part of our, our budget reductions. Our guidance staff is here. They would definitely talk about it. So the reality is, I believe, and they can correct my number from Ron and Christina Nolan, is that we have upwards of 40 students taking some sort of virtual course this year. 30 through Virtual High School and we have 14 at Scro. So, so we have 14 students at Scro Academy, which is through Reed's. So we have upwards of 44 students taking some sort of virtual course. Part of that is the reality of some of our budget reductions. Some of our budget reductions led to some limitations in offerings at the middle, high school level, and now students are looking for options, and we, we're able to fund some options in other places to do, some students are taking maybe an AP course they can access, or a wide variety of courses. And we could actually, if the school committee was interested in that, we could do a separate presentation on our virtual offerings that we're doing. But part of, part of that is a piece of our budget reductions and just being able to offer a wider scope of courses to students, you know, through some virtual classes. And we were forced into that a little bit based on some of our limitations and offerings. But there's, you know, obviously there's a positive side effect in some of those courses they're able to take that we couldn't offer through the school. That's why, that's why that went up a little bit.
So I would, I would accept the motion there for the budget transfer request?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers and eliminate the $50 student activity fee previously adopted.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? I'd make a, a request, and thank you guys for that. If, Tom, I don't know if you're real pressing or not, but student, student council hasn't been here for a while, captain's council, and it's nice to see him here, so I'd like to let him, they've been pretty patient so far as we've shifted the schedule.
Maybe in the early part of the agenda.
I'd love to let him get up here if you don't mind. All right, awesome. Come on up, guys. Thanks for being patient.
So if you got, if you guys just introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Kate LeFrennic, and I'm a senior at Carver High School, and I'm a part of the captain's council, and I do basketball, softball and cross country.
Hi, I'm Andrew Bumpus, and I do baseball, wrestling and football.
And so captain's council runs like three main events throughout the year. One of them is called Be an Eleven, where the girls' basketball team hosts a program in the gym. And it's for the seventh graders, and we just run team building exercises for them to get them involved and stuff.
And we do two other events with the year. The most recent one coming up would be Powderpuff. And it's grades nine versus 10, and 11 and 12 play each other. And it's to support pediatric, pediatric cancer, to raise awareness and gain money for that. And the other one would be Be an Eleven. Oh, the, no, the...
Jingle Ball Run?
Yes, thank you. The Jingle Ball Run. The Jingle Ball Run is basically to bring in toys for people who need them and can't always support themselves and need support from us. So basically, you have to bring in a toy, and then you get to run in a, I'm not sure if I, but it's a marathon around the school grounds. And it's, the whole school's involved. The whole school comes down the last two periods, and y'all watch them run, and it's a race. And it's just the last two periods of the day. It should be like before, I think it's before winter break, so.
Do you have a date for the Powderpuff game yet?
I'm not sure. It's soon though. I'm not sure.
What about the first seventh grade event that you, that you were talking about?
That's put on by the girls' basketball team, so that's in the winter when we have the season, so December, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. And any update on how, how our sports teams doing this fall?
Well, cross country, the girls' teams are doing good. We only lost one game, but the boys' team's kind of struggling.
Football's 2-4 right now.
Any questions from it all, guys? Thank you guys, very much. Thanks for being patient. Jenna, you have some, some updates. How are you?
Good, how are you? Can you hear me? Oh, God, it's really loud. So on September 13th, oh, it says 2016, we had a full council meeting, and we got our T-shirts. I don't have a picture right now, but it's, it says Carver Student Council on it. And Carver is in maroon, and then it's a student council, and then it has Stu, or Student, it's hard to explain, but it's like, Stuco is like in a different color, so it's like, you can see Stuco and then student council. And then on the back, it's Massachusetts with Carver highlighted on it, so that's how the shirts go. And so we got those. And then we had Crusader Fest on September 15th, and we made $2,000 profit. That's really good. We're ready to go. Yeah. So we had a great, great turnout. It was super fun. We had some, a lot of new members come and help us out, which was awesome. Next, we're going to have the apple pie social. It's up there. So it is at Carver Middle High School, and we're inviting all of us to, it's free. So it's Thursday, October 26th at 3:30 PM until 4:30. It's in the cafeteria. And we're going to have apple crisps, ice cream, coffee, tea. We're going to play bingo. And it's, we're going to make homemade pies, so our executive board has to make two pies each member, and then each regular member is going to make one pie. And all the proceeds are going to go to Special Olympics, so all of the pies are name your own price. So you get, hopefully, they'll give you a little bit more instead of just like, oh, I want, I'll pay you 25 cents for that. Like, they, they usually donate more. And there's no reservation required. So if you guys want, I'm going to, we're passing them out in school soon, so like, hopefully you all get one, and hopefully you all will attend. We're going to Fall C-Mask, oh, I should talk about Officer Shop first. So we went to Officer Shop last Friday. And that was at Holy Cross in Worcester. And that was when, from all across the state, executive boards, so there's 12 on our executive board. We only brought, I think, nine of us. And we all go there, and it's a bunch, it's workshops to help us like be leaders and to lead the rest of our councils, so that was really fun. Now we have Fall C-Mask, which is Southeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Councils, and that's just our region. And I'm actually running for president of C-Mask at our fall conference. So we're going to have people, so with C-Mask, you can't do handouts. That's against rules or I'll get disqualified, so I can't do that. But we're going to have our council, you know, my theme is be a cheerleader. It's all about leadership, and I, a cheerleader, if you guys don't know, and I like puns, so we're being cheerleaders. And we're going to have little pom poms. We're going to make shirts. It's going to be super cute, so wish me luck. I'm going to run for that. And on October 31st, we're going to do Make-A-Wish Halloween, and everyone who wears a costume will donate $1 or hopefully more. And we're going to donate that to a kid for his Make-A-Wish. I think that's pretty much it. Does anyone have any questions? I know I went kind of fast, sorry.
I don't know if good luck is the right term, but good luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right, well, thank you very much. Comments from the EAPC? Thank you for being patient also. Saying that a lot tonight.
Do a little co-speaking tonight. Hope you don't mind.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. For all the years I've been employed by the town of Carver, I've been consistently asked to do more, to give more and to do it better than before. I have, in earnest, given it my all to do that, to respect and meet every new initiative and requirement with a positive attitude, to change and grow alongside my students each and every year. I have answered that call every single time. This work ethic is the norm for the educators of Carver. We have compiled a list of over 100 different ways which will give, we give back to our students and our community. To just to name a few, we provide a giving tree for the families in need over the holidays, volunteer for fundraisers and fun runs, we chaperone field trips outside of the school schedule, and we give to the senior scholarship fund every year. I know our superintendent, who's regularly in the trenches, will affirm this truth. Carver educators are a dedicated professional group of people who answer the call and bring a sense of pride to the school committee and superintendent. The problem is, I do not feel that the district and community understand the depth of dedication and care our educators have for our children and our profession. No teacher can. The truth now is that Carver teachers and paraprofessionals are under attack, as is every bargaining unit that serves this town. While teachers and paraprofessionals have been busy teaching over the last three years, other bargaining units like our police and our DPW workers have been pressured into sacrificing the wages and benefits of new employees in order to keep their own. Our former superintendent, God rest her soul, apparently shielded teachers from this attack, thereby freeing us to concentrate on our work, which is our children. I, and other representatives, have at times asked you to take a stand. You may remember question two on the ballot last year. And although it was significantly late in the process, the school committee took a stand, one that 67% of the voters across the states agreed with. This stand served our own school budget. Educators are grateful that you found the courage to do that.
The EAPC is asking the superintendent, school committee, and the citizens of Carver to stand up for their educators. The, the salaries of Carver educators, police, DBW, and all other town workers are not as high compared to other towns. We all rely on our benefits along with the retirees. We negotiated our health insurance in good faith with the town only to have the selectmen negate an agreement we made with the town administrator. We ask that the Carver School Administration, School Committee, will publicly support the educators by supporting the healthcare plan originally agreed to by the town and not sit silently by and allow the select, selectmen to override our negotiations. We ask you to take a positive stand and support not only the educator of Carver, but all town employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So move on to approval of minutes. I'd like to separate these just because of the discussion with the executive session.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, it's fine.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular session minutes from September 11th.
I'll, I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions, comments on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And with the executive session, did everyone get a chance to look at the discussion there? Part of the comments were also through the, the selectmen. I saw them having a similar discussion. We can approve the executive session minutes not to be released, which is really what the conversation is about. So we don't have to wait to approve them. We'll approve them, but we approve them to not be released until that.
Okay. Do we put a date on when they can be released?
Uh, no, because we can't give a timeframe on when that situation is over.
Okay.
Yeah, and there is a process in place that from time to time, the executive session minutes are reviewed by the committee for release, and we'll have that in future agendas. So there, there is a process in place for those minutes to be released when, when appropriate.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes from September 11th to not be released.
Motion made and seconded. Questions? Comments on them?
My only, my only stipulation on that was, and you answered it already, was they would be released at some point.
They will be released at some point, but we don't know when, anything under that.
Ultimately, yeah, the executive session minutes are, cannot, are not released until the issue discussed in the executive session is no longer pertinent or resolved.
Exactly.
So once that issue is resolved, then the committee can release those executive session minutes.
I'm good with it.
And in fact, I think I heard the selectmen or somebody talking about even voting an executive session for executive session minute, so I don't see a need for that, but I've, I've heard the discussion. I've heard the discussion, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous?
And we need to bring back to the executive session minutes from August. So I'll just mention that today. They should have been put on tonight's agenda, they just weren't, so, because that, we didn't, we never voted on the executive session minutes from the August meeting. We'll bring those back in November. They'll be listed, so the August executive session will be on the November meeting, just so the committee's aware of that.
Communications.
Communications. Uh, so two communications from the superintendent. One is actually a recognition, uh, that we could have done as a recognition. Uh, we've talked about doing some recognitions at the beginning of our meetings, and we'll be looking to bring that back in November. I just wanted the committee to be aware that on Saturday, uh, September twenty-third, uh, under the leadership of Mr. Tresker, uh, we had three students, Claire Manning, Haley Orellola, and Tori Dibble, uh, participate in U.S. Citizens Day, Citizenship Day. Uh, and the purpose of that day is they went and assisted in Boston, uh, over four hundred and fifty people, uh, gained citizenship. So what did the volunteers do on that day? Uh, they helped people complete their applications, uh, they worked on completing the applications to get a fee waiver. Uh, then they began the registration of walk-ins, and then they assisted in childcare with parents. Um, so this is the second year that Mr. Tresker has brought a group of students in to participate in Citizenship Day in Boston. Uh, and they actually had the great experience of, um, being able to meet the mayor, so they met Mayor Marty Walsh, uh, and they got a picture with him. Uh, so it was just an exciting day for our students. They enjoyed it, wanted to recognize them. Uh, and Mr. Mr. Tresker shared this with the entire middle high school staff. I thought I'd share it, uh, with the committee as a communication. Um, se- second communication, is last year, um, the South Shore superintendents and South Coast superintendents talked about planning a breakfast in which we would invite local legislators and school committee members to discuss current concerns that we have in education, and really specifically educational funding mostly. This year, it's been decided that Tawn is gonna host such a breakfast, uh, on Tuesday, October thirty-first, Halloween, uh, so we can all come in our costumes, uh, from eight AM to ten AM at Tawn High. Uh, you are cordially invited to attend. Senator Pacico and Representative Susan Gifford have already confirmed their attendance. Um, Senator Pacico is also the representative from Tawn as well as Carver. Um, and so he's actually working with the Tawn Superintendent Julie Hackett to plan the event. Um, the superintendents have planned to address the following issues, and how the day is gonna work is, in essence, the they've, there's one superintendent who's gonna address each of these issues and make a presentation to, uh, the members of the school committee, uh, and all the local representatives. Uh, my sense early on is that we're gonna have most of the superintendents, uh, and most of the representatives from the entire South Shore and South Coast. Uh, and I think we'll have a lot of school committee members as well. And obviously, we wanted to formulate a, formulate an agenda a little bit. Uh, so the topics to be discussed that day are the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations, which we've actually reviewed with this committee before. Um, uh, the accountability system for MCAS. Uh, and that that system hasn't been finalized yet what that's gonna look like. Actually, in November, we'll be bringing, our MCAS scores were actually released to the district today. Uh, they're gonna be released to parents, uh, on Wednesday, and we'll be doing a formal report on MCAS scores at our November meeting. And maybe we'll talk a little bit about the accountability system as well. Um, the decrease in circuit breaker funding, uh, the funding of circuit breaker is always an issue of whether, uh, it's funded at its maximum. Um, and unfunded mandates, which I know is an issue that the community's talked a lot about. So those are gonna be the four major topics that are gonna be addressed by the superintendents to the group, and it's just gonna be a breakfast and a discussion about some of the concerns we have about going, what's going on in education. Uh, so all members of the school committee are invited to attend. So if you could just let me know by Friday if you're interested in attending, uh, because we need to respond to Tawn High, the number of people, uh, who will be coming from Carver. Uh, I will be in attendance, and, um, as I said, any member of the committee who can make it, uh, on Halloween, on October thirty-first, from eight to ten at Tawn High, uh, we're glad to have you be there.
Costumes, no costumes?
No, no, I would, I would say go no costumes, because it would be the recommendation. I am not gonna wear my, I'm not gonna wear my costume to the event.
I'll check with Brad just to see if we're not wearing the same thing.
All right, so yeah, yeah, and if you're, uh, if you're in, if you are interested in attending or if you can make it, that'd be great, and if you can just let myself or Anne Marie know, uh, by Friday, that would be great, and we're gonna send our, we're gonna send our response, uh, over to Tawn High on Friday this week.
You'd be giving us a report on that?
Yeah.
Those of us who can't make it?
Yeah, so, uh, on November, I can give some feedback to the committee of, uh, how that meeting went. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we move on to reports from the superintendent.
Yep, okay. Uh, first, we did had, we had a few hires, um, over the past month. Uh, we hired a K paraprofessional, Denise Manning, and then the rest were all bus-related. Uh, two part-time bus drivers who've actually been in the training process, um, so they completed their training process. Uh, they're gonna be part-time CDL and also possibility sub-drivers for us. Uh, we've had an issue of having sub-drivers. That's been a real concern of the district, is we really haven't had sub-drivers. And our sub-drivers have been our transportation director, Maureen Dixon, and, well, Maureen Siedenoff. Uh, and our, our assistant in the office, Kristen Foley, they've, they've been our, uh, they've been our sub-drivers, uh, so it's great to have some part-time people and some, uh, one or two bus drivers on board for subs. Um, and then for a special ed, special education student, we had to add a bus monitor, uh, so we hired a bus monitor, uh, this past month. So those are all of our personnel moves in the month of October so far. Just moving on, moving on to enrollment. Uh, this is really, this is a very beginning presentation, which is gonna be really, I think we'll get into the meat of this presentation in November. But I wanted to give our October first, uh, enrollment numbers, for the committee to take a look at. So officially, our total enrollment is down fifty-two students from October first from last year. Uh, this decline in students can be attributed to families moving, uh, families making the choice to seek educational alternatives, including homeschooling, charter schools, vocational schools, private schools, school choice. Now, there's a second part of this report. Um, and we haven't, that part of the report hasn't been finalized. So we're in the process right now of the students, the schools that our students attend that are not in Carver have a responsibility to report that to us. So Rising Tide, Sturgis Charter, home schooled students, the vocational schools, B.C. High, Sacred Heart, Coyle Cassidy, we can keep listing them, uh, they have to report to us what Carver students are in attendance. We're in the process of compiling those reports. We don't have all that information in yet. We will have all that information by the end of October. So that's gonna give us a, a better glimpse into what is our reduction of fifty-two students? Is our, and what's it attributed to? Is it attributed to some people moving? It's, and my sense is it's gonna be attributed to all those things. It's gonna be attributed to some people moved, and we had more people move out than move in. Uh, I think some of it's gonna be attributed to students attending other schools and making other educational choices. But I, we really can't have a discussion or a dialogue about that right now, or to my mind, it doesn't make, we can. It doesn't make sense to have a discussion or dialogue about those things right now until we have the hired numbers of where the students go. So, and do a comparison over time of our students who are enrolled in other schools. So we'll have that information for the November report. My intention is to bring that document back in November, have this larger discussion about, um, you know, movement of students, because, and I've said this, uh, said this last year, and I've said at the beginning of this year, and I'm gonna say it again tonight, is enrollment is, has to become a concern for us. Uh, because losing enrollment, and Brad will explain to us, losing enrollment doesn't actually have a financial impact unless students are going to a charter school. Otherwise, it doesn't have a financial, or a school choice. Uh, but private institutions, moving, the way the funding is set up, we're a harm, we're a whole harmless district. So our chapter seventy funding is gonna stay where it is, so it doesn't impact our chapter seventy number. And we can get into this in November, but we do have to be concerned about a decreasing enrollment. Uh, any school district has to be concerned about that. So there's two things that I'm gonna look at in terms of doing that. First, we wanna, and we've talked about this, we wanna have an exit survey, so that everyone who leaves the district completes the exit survey, their family, the students. Uh, I actually have a meeting coming up this weekend with the guidance staff who's here to talk about that exit survey. And my intention is in November to present an exit survey to the committee just to review, to say, so you know, this is the survey people are gonna get as they leave the district. The second piece of that is I'm working with the administrative team in terms of what I'm gonna refer to as a marketing campaign. But I think that we have to develop a marketing campaign to start talking about some of the great things that happen within the district, because great things do happen here every day. We need to celebrate those things, and we need to begin to market ourselves, um, and try to answer the, and the marketing campaign's gonna have to eventually tie to the reason why students are leaving in the exit survey. We have to put those two pieces together and say, if we are losing students, why are we losing students, and what can we do about that? And then it's also gonna have an impact on our budget discussions. So this, these enrollment numbers, uh, are kind of the beginning piece of that discussion. And I wanted to put them out there today because, uh, October first is the official enrollment number that goes forward to the state. These are the official numbers that went forward. Uh, but I think we'll do, actually do a more detailed analysis of these numbers in November, uh, when we have the sending student reports of where the other students are. Uh, have the exit survey, maybe some ideas of concepts of what we can do for some marketing pieces, kind of bring that all together as as one discussion. Uh, besides that, I'll take, uh, questions or thoughts about, uh, the current enrollment.
Well, this is off-topic, but I, uh, I have to actually awkwardly leave because, uh, I have a conference call in the West Coast.
Did you do your exit survey?
So I'm thankful that we were able to move some votes around for me, so I thank you very much to the committee for accommodating me. Um, and I look forward to looking at the presentations. Again, I'm very, very sorry that I will have to miss them. Um, but thank you.
And again, I, I think to Scott's point, when we have data and information in front of us next month, it could be a, a deeper conversation that might be more meaningful then than now.
But something we definitely have to look at as a committee, as a district.
Yep. Out of doubt. So moving on.
Moving on. All right, uh, so our next report is from the guidance department, and I think we're gonna have four representatives present to us. Uh, guidance department chair Kimberly Dwayne, school adjustment counselor Sean Sullivan, uh, middle school guidance counselor Trish Winslow, and high school guidance counselor Christina Nolan. Uh, so welcome to them, and they're gonna talk to us a little bit about, and this actually, last year, we had some discussions within the committee, um, in the spring, uh, about our guidance curriculum and what roles guidance is playing in terms of supporting students, uh, as they, uh, transition to career in college, starting in sixth grade through grade twelve.
And I, I think that kind of stemmed from a conversation when the, the state changed sort of what they're mandating from districts and, and what was happening with the social emotional changes, I think.
That was, that was part of the discussion, and then, and then there, there was some, that was part of the discussion, there was some concerns raised about, uh, college, the college application process and where students were applying, and, uh, so we thought we'd go through the, the services that we offer to students, uh, grade six to twelve. So tha- thank you all, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. So I'm Kimberly Dwayne, the, um, adjustment counselor for the high school and the department chair for guidance. Um, and, you know, when we are in there, when I'm in the classroom with the kids, the first thing that I say is that I feel very fortunate because I love my job. Um, and my hope, if, you know, if there's one thing we can do for these kids, is to help them realize what they're passionate about, so that someday their jobs won't feel like work. But, you know, then I think that's a great thing, so that's sort of how I see why we do what we do are a big chunk of it. Um, so if you could go to the next, uh, whoever is controlling that, is it Mary?
Yeah.
It is. So, the way we organize it, um, for the kids is that we use Google Classroom. And so we create a classroom for each graduating class. So obviously, this, this year's seniors are the class of twenty eighteen, and we've included two links if you just wanna quickly open each one. So it, it starts with them in grade six, and then we, as they go along through our guidance curriculum, we add tasks for them in there so that by the time they graduate, they have a portfolio, a college and career port, portfolio. Um, and so even work, you know, assessments that they take online, we couple that with putting a worksheet into the classroom so that they can put some of the results that, you know, that spoke to them or touched to them and put it there so that they can compare year to year, um, whether the results changed or were similar, things like that.
So I'm unable to access that because I'm not a student enrolled in those classes.
Oh, wow.
It asked me to start to make a profile when I clicked on it too, so.
Oh, really?
So.
Sorry.
Yes, if you, if you share, if you share a class, a, a Google Classroom link, for a person to open that link, they have to be a member of the class. You can add people as members of the class.
That's all right.
It's kind of makes sense. I mean, if you, if you wa, if you wanted to show it, one of you could log into your account as a member of the class.
Actually, Jenna has an app, yeah.
Oh, nice.
Show really quickly.
But is Jenna's class linked in there?
Yes.
Yeah, I have it, hold on. We're just gonna mirror it.
That is two thousand nineteen.
Well, so you can still see,
Right.
um, some of the things that are there. And then as we post them, they have to make a copy and sort of put it into their own Google Drive accounts. But if they, you know, forgot to do it or they wanna do something again, they can always go back to the classroom and it's all right there. Okay, so then, um, we'll start with sixth grade. I think that makes most sense, and so.
Yeah, my name is Sean Sullivan. I'm the adjustment counselor, sixth through eight, and I work with Trish Winslow, guidance counselor, sixth through eight. I think we're together too much. We start the whole process in fifth grade. Trish and I go down to the, um, fifth grade class. We speak to each classroom in the fifth grade and talk about, uh, what to expect in the sixth grade. Things to, about the transition, um, everything from, um, with an nurse's offices to now you have to change for gym, which is a huge stressor for a lot of kids. So we go down there and get, first, and we hand them the book, um, Everything You Need to Know About Sixth Grade, so they can bring it home with their parents and family members, and they can go through it. And, um, it has a lot of useful information, and there are times for lunches, and a lot of things change for them. So we do that, and then about a week or two later, probably, we have them come up for a tour. So what we do is we break them up into groups of like eight to ten kids, and we have our guidance helpers, which are kids six through eight, um, which we've identified as really good role models, and they bring them around, um, to the school and classrooms, and they'll go into the main office, and they'll go into some sixth grade classrooms and visit with the teachers, and they can field any questions from the kids, and, uh, it's a nice way for the kids to sort of get acclimated. They've probably been to the school, a lot of them use the gym and things like that, but they've never really gone around to the classrooms. Um, and then at the end, we all meet in the auditorium. We have a question and answer session with them, which is really good if they have any other questions, um, for us. And then the other one, we have the parents come, probably in Ju, I think it's June, um, and Ms. Hawley comes, and Mr. Schultz, and myself, and Ms. Winslow go. And we present to the parents, again, if they have any questions, what to expect in the sixth grade. We have a huge turnout because everyone wants to know what team their son or daughter has, so it's, it's a, it's a must-go-to. And otherwise, they just get it the next day. We send it over to the elementary schools, and the kids get it, um, from their teachers. So it's a great, you know, it's a great thing for the parents. They can ask questions, um, of us that they have. And then in the summertime, when Ms. Winslow comes in earlier than I do, she has locker days where the kids can actually go into the school. No, it's self-guided, but they can go into the school and, um, use a locker, practice. That's usually a stressor for them. Um, it's the first time they've had to use them. But they come in and they, just a self-guided tour. A lot of them come in and will take another tour. They'll walk around the building. This year was a little different because we had so much construction going on, but usually they can, you know, they can pretty much walk freely through and, and see the different, um, parts of the building, and it's not really that scary. Um, and that's what we do in, um, before they even get to sixth grade. Then in sixth grade, um, Trish and I get into the classrooms. We get into each sixth grade classroom once a term. And we have, each term, we have different, um, themes. The first one is getting organized. A lot of times, it's a big deal to, they go from, um, having one teacher or just two teachers to now they have, you know, four subjects, um, plus allied arts classes. So it's very confusing for a lot of them, so we try to help them, um, with scheduling and just what to expect it. A lot of times, we try to push the three-ring binder for them to keep organized, keep everything in one place, so they're just taking one binder out of their locker when they go home to do homework. We do time management second term. We actually do a schedule with them. A lot of these kids have, as you, who have children, have a zillion activities after school. They're trying, we're trying to focus on, you gotta make time for homework, you gotta make time for yourselves, um, for your own mental health. Third term, we do a whole lesson on responsibility, making good choices, and then, um, term four, we actually start the whole career awareness, um, thing where we talk a lot about, you know, um, just things they enjoy, things they might wanna pursue when they get older. And that's sixth grade, so.
All right, um, so in the seventh grade, we, we try to touch upon, in a little more depth, the career exploration by introducing the students to Naviance. Um, Naviance, which I know Kim and Christina will talk a little more about. It's a web-based program that's primarily used for high school students. But for the middle school students, we introduce them to different assessments that help them figure out what they like to do and what they're good at. Um, this year, they'll be completing the Strengths Explorer, and that really helps the students, um, figure out what their talents are and what they're good at, and how they can build upon that. So, so we really So we really start to ask them to think about what they like and to really just start to think about what they might like to do when they're a little bit older, to start thinking about life in high school and even after high school. We don't expect them in the seventh grade to know what their career path is going to be, but it's a, it is an important time for them to just start to think about it and to start to gather some information about their interests and, again, things that they may be good at. And that, so the Strengths Explorer is something that will be saved in their Google Classroom so they can go back and look at that when they're meeting with their high school guidance counselor and look back and say, oh, I really, I did like standing in front of the classroom, or I did like to help younger kids. So it just, it's a good way to help them think about their future. And then moving on to just some of the academic piece in the seventh grade, we do find that seventh grade is a difficult, can be a difficult transition for the middle school students. They're no longer on a, on a team. They're kind of following that junior high model and schedule. So we're actually, right now, we're in the process of organizing some study skills groups and organization groups for our seventh grade students and our sixth and eighth grade students, but primarily seventh grade is where we see they need a little more support. And then in the seventh grade, we offer a few different presentations just to get, make the students aware of some opportunities, one of them being PCC. And also representatives from Old Colony will come and talk to the students about what a vocational school is.
Yeah. That's eighth grade, yeah. Thanks. In eighth grade, Trish and I go into every, we went into every, what was it, social studies class this year for the eighth graders, just to tell them of what to expect. Eighth grade moves really fast. Before you know it, they're at the Spring Fling Dance, which is a big thing they have at the end of the year. It goes by really fast. So just to know, the majority will go to Carver High, which is great, and, but some are looking at Old Colony, some look at private schools, charter schools. Some schools need letters of recommendations. We go off, we talk about how to do those, you know, what to, approaching the teacher or things like that. So there's a lot of things that they have to know just throughout. PCC is one of them that we talk about. Trish goes in later on and talks to them a little more in-depth. We do go back in for eighth grade NAVYANCE, which is nice. We keep it, as Kim talked about, we keep it all together. So some of the eighth graders will look back at what they put down in seventh grade of their interests in the big, what was I thinking? It was only a year before, which is sort of funny, but it's nice to actually see the change in them, and we'll talk about that. And we actually go over, we're going over in, what's, a couple of weeks, to Old Colony for a field trip. We bring a group, usually between 50 to 75 kids over there to see the school. They bring them into the shops and show them what to expect. And we usually have probably 30 to 35 kids apply there every year, and a little over 20 usually go for the eighth graders, go there for high school. So we do that. And then we actually have, before the Old Colony's accepted, they have an interview process. So Trish and I have an interview workshop for the kids, just to talk about how to give a good interview, eye contact, you know, voice, things like that. I'm probably talking really fast and I apologize. Not good at interviewing. But so we, we do go, which is actually good. Yeah, sorry. I just ramble.
Can you repeat, can you repeat all of that? Can you repeat all of that?
I'm good. Eighteen and under, I'm good with. Adults, you know, just throw me off, you know? So we do that, which is nice because I think a lot of the kids going in, they've never had an interview, and now at 14, they're going out and getting jobs and things like that. So it is a good experience for them to go through. So that's what we do through eighth grade.
And then just lastly, some of the other things that, that happen daily in the guidance office, just academic advising, study skills, peer mediation, just helping kids problem-solve, conflict resolution. We support them with their schedules.
Organization. Do you want me to keep going? I'm sorry. Organization. We've worked together way too long. Career exploration. We actually enlist the guidance helpers, which I talked about before. They not only do the tours, but if we have new students, we try to align a guidance helper up that has the same schedule, so they'll make sure that student is getting the class. We'll have someone to sit with at lunch, so they're a great resource. So we have a group of those kids that help us out through the year.
So then we move on to grade nine. And the guidance department sees all of the kids four times throughout the school year. The first time is really to talk about what, you know, what high school is, the difference between, you know, credits and graduation requirements, and the fact that they're building a transcript and that their academic performance, the courses they choose to take, how all of those impact what they're able to do when they graduate. And, you know, what we say to them is, don't limit yourself. You know, go for it. No matter what you think you're going to do now, you could change your mind, you know, graduation day or even after graduation. But, so you want to leave all doors open, you know, for yourself as much as possible. So that's sort of the first class. The second one is another assessment in NAVYANCE called the Cluster Finder, where basically it looks at their, the classes they like the best, their personalities, their interests, put it all together, and then what clusters of careers are the best fit for them. And there are 16 different clusters. The third one, we'll get to the next slide, but then the fourth term, we just try to have them think of, you know, long-term, what types of courses would they like to take throughout their time in Carver so that if there are any that they want to take that have prerequisites, they can start to plan it out. And obviously, we don't hold them to it, but it's, it's important to start thinking about because research shows that the earlier you start with this kind of discussion and thought, the more academically successful they'll be, the more engaged they'll be in their own education, and then hopefully, you know, the more prepared they'll be when they graduate and, you know, where they want to go and what they want to do.
You can, well, vested interest in themselves.
Exactly. Right. That it's, you know, it's their education. And regardless of what their parents say or don't say about what they should do, it's, you know, it's their education that they'll take with them the rest of their lives. So that third term is a four, it's a total of four classes. It's the Break Free From Depression Curriculum that comes out of Boston Children's Hospital. And basically, it teaches students how to recognize the signs and symptoms of depression and suicide, what to do if they encounter those signs, either in themselves or someone they know. And then also just teaches them healthy coping skills, just for any, you know, whether, whether they're depressed or not, you know, we all have times in life that are stressful and difficult. And so when we have those times, what can we do to help make ourselves feel better, but in a healthy way? That's sort of the last series. Then in the 10th grade, we do another assessment in NAVYANCE. This one is all about the personality. And, you know, it poses different scenarios to them and they have to say which one they're most like. And again, suggests different careers. One thing that was funny, a former guidance counselor always said that it came up, she kept getting Funeral Director in, as her results when she was younger. But then she's like, you know, guidance counselor, it's not that much different. I'm dealing sometimes with crying people, I help organize, you know, so it's kind of funny. I thought it was funny.
I laughed at you.
I've got a strange sense of humor. And then the second class that we do basically helps them, again, to connect what they do in high school to what is available to them when they graduate. So, you know, they look at states, different state schools, private schools, what GPA students who are being accepted into those schools need to have, what courses they need to take in order to be accepted. And then they look at where they are now and establish two goals of sort of how they can build, you know, either whether they want to, you know, get involved more, join a club or something like that, or a sport, whether they want to take more challenging courses, things like that. And then the last thing we do is, there is another online resource called Mass CIS. That's a free resource to all Massachusetts residents. And it's, the information in there is just more geared to Massachusetts as opposed to NAVYANCE, which is national. So, and it also has more information on, like, armed, the armed forces and apprenticeships, like people who want to go into that, a trade. And so we want to expose them to that resources as well. So that's sort of the, the end of what we do in grade 10.
So for grade 11, junior year, we really start making plans for their future in what they're going to college or career or military or going into a trade. So we have a college application night for parents and students where we go over specifically the college application process and try to break it down easily for students and parents so that they're not, you know, they'll get very nervous about junior year, going into senior year. So we really try to break it down step by step so that they can see that it doesn't have to be as scary as some might think it might be. We also do junior workshops starting in January, second semester, and that's a 10-session guidance class. And we do a lot of different classes focused on resume writing. We do interviews, mock interviews with students so that they can compare, whether it's an interview for college or interviews for jobs. We go over the SAT and ACT and show students how to register for those. We also go over letters of recommendation with them. They need letters from teachers and then their counselors. We, again, break down the college application process for them. We do something called Alumni Panel. So we have students come back who graduated the year prior and talk to the students about their first year at college, and they can give them tips and let them know about their experiences there. We also have a career day in which people from the community come in and we'll talk to the juniors about how they got to where they are and talk about their careers and what steps that they, you know, recommend that they do.
And if any of you are interested in being on that panel, we'd love to have you.
We try to get as many different careers as we can so that the students can see a broad range of different careers. We also do another NAVYANCE assessment, the Career Interest Profiler. So students have those results that they can go back to and look during their senior year if they're still trying to figure out what they want to major in. And then we also introduce the Senior Internship Program. Students see a certain number of credits to be eligible for that program. Some students have an internship in the building with another teacher, and then a lot of students do go out of the building for two or three periods and work in the community with the field that they're interested in. Throughout grade 11, we have individual college and career meetings with students, so we meet with each student and kind of break down everything that we talked about in junior workshop and go over their individual plan and can answer questions individually. We also open it up to parents so that they can come in and meet with us as well, which is very nice. And then we also have some field trips junior year. So we go to the Boston National College Fair, and there's over 500 colleges there, and students can go around to different booths, ask questions to admissions counselors, get information. Usually they give them their email addresses so they can set up tours and interviews and things like that. A lot of students go into the college fair with a list of schools that they're interested in from doing the junior workshop and going through NAVYANCE so that they have a plan going into the college fair and can target those specific schools that they're interested in. We also take a field trip to Bridgewater State University to get a college tour, and they hear from admissions counselors from Bridgewater as far as what they're looking for in a college applicant and so forth. And we go to the Universal Technical Institute, and that is a trade school for automotive. So we try to make a broad range of field trips for students that are interested in different things. So this is just a scattergram that we use on NAVYANCE. So when we do a college search for students, it will show students from Carver who've applied to that specific school and have gotten in, or students who applied and did not get in. So this scattergram shows specifically Bridgewater State. So you can see the green check marks are students who applied and got in, and the red X's are students who applied and did not get in. And then it will plot whatever student is logged in, it will plot their point on there so they can see, is this a safety school, so a school that I'll definitely get into? Is it a target school, a school that I will probably get into, or a reach school, a school that, you know, is going to be a little bit harder for me to get into? So we try to have the students make a list of two of each of those schools when they're applying so that they have a good chance of getting into at least some of them. So that's the example for Bridgewater. So you can kind of see that it follows an expectable chart. And then I'll show you, we have Northeastern who's not as expectable.
Oh, that's Bridgewater again, yeah.
And so this is for College Board, another website that we use. And so this isn't just students from Carver, this is students from all around the country. And it shows the GPAs and what the percentage of students who have applied and gotten in of that for GPAs there. And the below that is Northeastern. So their scattergram looks a lot different. So most schools do follow, the higher your GPA, the more likely you are to get in. But here, looking at Northeastern, you can see that it's kind of all over the place. And it's like this at schools all around the South Shore, so it's not just Carver. So we usually say Northeastern's going to be a reach school for anybody, even regardless of what your GPA might be.
They're just unpredictable.
Unpredictable, yeah. And then you can also see on NAVYANCE how many students have applied each year, how many students were accepted, and then how many students actually enrolled in that college. So this is data from 2015, 2016, 2017 for Northeastern. And then for grade 12, we do a college application boot camp in August, so right before school starts. We have this boot camp that seniors can sign up for, and we actually go through the college application process with them and have them start filling out applications. So it's really nice for students to come in and have some applications done before they even start school. Now that we have a lot of students applying early action, this just gets the ball rolling quicker, and we have more students applying early because of this. So if you've done it for the past two years and we've had more success with it each year, and students really seem to enjoy it, we try to make it fun and get them pizza and some soda. And it's about three hours that they come in and can really ask questions about the applications if they have them, and we really take them through the whole thing.
And that was Christina's idea, which I think was a fabulous idea.
We also do more individual college and career meetings building off from junior year. Now this is more, okay, so where are you applying? What are you going to do? And answer any questions they have there. And sometimes parents will comment also for these meetings and join. We do a bi-weekly college and career drop an hour. So again, if they need help filling out applications, if they need help signing up for the SATs, we're there to help them do that. They might need help with their college essay. A lot of students also will reach out to the English department and get help there for their essay. So we really try to make ourselves available as much as we can, either meetings during school or meetings after school and doing the drop an hour. MIFIA has a presentation in Middleborough. They used to come to Carver, but because we're so small, we partnered with Middleborough. There's actually the Financial Aid presentation this Wednesday. So a lot of our students and parents will go to that presentation to find out information for financial aid. And then at the end of senior year, we have Massa Sawyer Community College and Cape Cod Community College come to the high school for on-the-spot admissions. And they'll actually interview students and then accept them right on the spot. So it's nice for students who are planning on going to community college, and even some students who might not have a plan yet, they might do the on-the-spot admission just as a backup. So we have a lot of students who take part in both of those on-the-spot admission days with Massa Sawyer and Cape Cod. And we go into the classroom at the end of senior year and go over what you should know before you go to college with seniors. So resources on how to get involved in college, or maybe how to reach out to student activities and, you know, sign up for intramurals or do sports, go over how to live a healthy lifestyle going to be a senior, sorry, going to be a freshman in college and things like that. So we try to prepare them for life after, after we school.
So then that's just a list of general guidance services that we have for all students, you know, throughout every year. So, you know, we help them with, of course, scheduling and schedule changes and academic advising, staying on top of their grades, counseling services. And, you know, so that's about it. And also, we are on Twitter. Just going to plug that if you'd like to follow us if you haven't already. Just going to plug that if you'd like to follow us if you haven't already.
Thank you for being there for our students. And thank you for showing this. It's a, it's helpful with a student in fifth grade and in seventh. It's very helpful to know what's going on. Any, any questions for them at all? From any, no?
No, you're doing a good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for taking your time and being here. We appreciate it very much.
The only thing I'd like to add is, I think, you know, one of the purposes of the presentation is just to give the community a sense of the wide scope of services that are available through guidance. The Middle High School Guidance Department does an outstanding job in terms of offering a wide range of services to our students. And if you really have any question or any concern about anything that's happening, just turn to them and they'll have the information and support you in the best way they can. And there's a lot of stuff going on during the school day. And I don't think people in the community may not look at, they may look at as guidance services when they were in high school, which I think were different. And I think there's been a real shift in the last 10 years of what it means to, guidance is a curriculum area in which students get instruction. And, you know, obviously, from, you know, the sixth grade of having some days on time management and introduction to career awareness to junior year, having the 10-session junior workshop that all students attend. It's, they just do a nice job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I have a, sorry. Most curious about on the MIFA presentation, when they switch from Carver to Middleborough, do we see a decrease in parent involvement?
I don't know.
Sure. I, I feel like it's still a good turnout. I've already had at least five parents that I've talked to within the past week say that they're.
We're definitely going to go.
They, MIFA used to present at our school and they actually said that our participation was too low to justify an evening. So, that led to us partnering with Middleborough. And that, it's, that's not only us, that happens in other communities. So, they, they kind of, where possible, they try to regionalize, where they can make a presentation to 50, 75, 100 people versus 20.
When, when did that start?
We've been with the MIFA presentation for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
No, when, when, when did you join with Middleborough?
Maybe.
Three years ago?
Years ago, yeah. Maybe four, it was before I was here.
Really?
Four years ago.
Okay.
It's right around the corner.
Yeah, true.
And it's the same exact presentation, no matter where, where they are. And our other guidance counselor, Christine, who's not here today, she lives in Middleborough, so she always goes to that to represent Carver and do that for us.
That's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul F. Clark.
Yeah, I'm sorry. All right, next up, we have, we have several reports this evening. Next up, Principal Holly is going to make a presentation on, just give the committee our SAT and AP data, our in for our graduating seniors from last year. And AP is all of our students for AP scores. SAT is graduating seniors. So, we're going to report those scores out to the committee and talk about it a little bit.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share information with you today. There are a few things that I wanted to cover as far as informational because there has been a change in SAT results. So, if, you can go ahead and move forward, Marissa, I saw you scrolling. Yep, scrolling is fine. So, as you start to look at the information regarding our student scores, you will notice that there is a breakoff for the 2017, 2018 year. And the reason that that transpired was because the way that they report results has changed. Previously, from 2013 through 2016, they did the reports where they actually broke them out into three components. So, at that point, students were able to score up to 2,400 points. But at this time, they're back to the 1,600 system. So, that's why you will see that for the math component, it has stayed the same and all of our information is found in that one graphic. But as you look towards the 2017, 2018 information, that you will see that it's off towards the side. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was transparent as we move forward. Some of the items that we have listed here, we really wanted to show how our students were doing within the state, but also within the nation over the trajectory of the past five years. And what we can see is that our student scores have increased in certain areas. As we look towards mathematics, we can see that our student scores have increased from 2016 to 2017. And we do notice that there are some slight decreases within the writing component. And that is something that even this evening before coming here, I was sending out an email to the staff as we prepare for a benchmark for our students to continuously help them in their writing capability. So, that is something that we have embedded into our practice to make sure that all students are successful. So, I want to go through each of the three components that we have before us and then I'll be able to answer any questions and just share with you overall what's going on as far as SAT and answer any questions you may have before we move into AP. So, in looking at our critical reading, you will see from 2013 to 2014, and that was prior to my time, so I'm sure that Ms. Superintendent Neef will share any information during that timeframe that I may not be able to speak towards. But we saw a drastic increase where over 40-point differentiation between the 2013 and the 2014 year. And over that timeframe, we have seen that while there's been a flux where we've seen both increase and decrease dependent on our student population, that we have been able as a community to stay above the statistics of the nation. So, we are proud to report those items. As a state, we're continuously competing, not just with state standards, but also competitively within ourselves. So, that's why it's critically important as we review this data to determine what is the difference that we're observing between one year to another, what information, what student statistics that we have to help us move forward and also to be able to break the information down and look at the score reports that they come back. I know this is something that the department chairs will often do as they review the information as well as our guidance counselors with students. The College Board strongly encourages students to take the exam multiple times. We just had in October, students take the PSATs and they should take the information from the PACTs to be able to help them decipher where their scores are. As my guidance team just shared with you, students who are determining what collegiate institutions they want to move on to, certain schools look at different scale scores as far as it relates to the SAT. So, we say to students, you can take the SAT multiple times and we actually encourage you to take it multiple times if your first score is something that you're, you feel as though you can improve on. Students are strongly encouraged, especially within the May or June of their junior year, to take it because oftentimes, they are completing their college applications in the beginning of their fall semester of their senior year. So, they have the scores that they're able to determine. So, those are some of the overall things that we try to share. For our students within the mathematics component, one of the things that we've been very happy and we've seen this with the level of instruction and talking to the math department chair today regarding how we've seen the students grow from 2013 at a level of 509 to current standards of 552. And what she shared that is within her department, they've really been starting to decipher all of the data that they receive from their students, not just the formative assessments that occur within their classrooms, but information that they receive from MCAS when they look at the PSAT breakdown, when they look at the SAT, and also as they look at the AP, which I will discuss a little bit later within this presentation to determine how they can change their instruction to better support the students. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is there is an essay component. So, I know that for those of you who may have heard different information, I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware, there is an essay component. However, that is not factored into the current 1,600 score. There is an optional essay that students are able to take. The essay allows students to, again, have another factor for competition as they move into different colleges. As we just learned with Northeastern, there's not really one variable that students are able to take into consideration outside of GPA when Northeastern is making the decisions. So, students who, again, take on the option of having the essay and these other components help to set them apart for those reach schools that they are intending to enroll in within their freshman year of college. And there's the age old, as you begin to move into the AP, where we encourage our students to guess, there's always that myth of, should you guess? There is no points that are taken away for SAT scores. So, we encourage our students to answer every single question as they move forward. You never know. You may think that you're not aware of the answer and it may be something that you actually do remember from one of the classes that you took or something that you read. So, as we move into AP, I just.
Can I, can I just add one thing onto the SAT if that's okay? So, just to break that historical piece, for a long time, our scores had been very flat. And we're actually going back to probably 1995 to 2005, we had a stretch of like a 10-year period where we were consistently between 500 and 504, 505, both in critical reading and in mathematics. And we were a little below the state average. So, one of our goals as a school became to get those scores up a little bit and be competitive with the state average. Massachusetts has the highest SAT scores in the country year, year over year. So, Massachusetts, students in Massachusetts score better on the SAT than any students in the country. And so, our goal, I think a goal for us, is to always be at or above the state average. And we've been able to achieve, achieve that in general over the last five years. And then, this graduating classes 2017 was above the state average, I look in both critical reading and mathematics. So, that, that is a good accomplishment.
Yes. And we only missed it by three for the other component.
Pretty close in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm willing to take that as a win. Are there any other questions or comments regarding SAT before we move on to AP? So, for AP, one of the things that, this year, we had an AP kickoff and it was really an exciting time because we were able to celebrate. Oftentimes, we have pep rallies for our athletes and it was almost a quasi pep rally for the students who were enrolled in AP. Superintendent Neef came out and joined us and we were able to give our students high fives as they came in because we really want to stress to them that we appreciate them taking on these rigorous courses by taking on AP classes. Over 2016 and 2017, we did a comparison so you can just see some information related to the amount of students who were enrolled in AP courses and the amount of AP exams that students took. So, I want to just clarify, when you see that we have, for instance, last year, 105 students who were enrolled in AP courses, but 217 exams were taken. It is a requirement for our students if you're going to commit to the AP and we give them a timeframe where they have two, two weeks at the beginning of the year to almost audit, similar like we do within collegiate courses, the opportunity to do a class audit of an AP course to determine if it is something that they want to make that commitment to. And of those students, many of them are enrolled in multiple AP classes. So, that's why you will see that there is almost more than double the amount of exams that are being taken by the percentage of students. We find that students who are within their senior year often will take courses that we are able to provide within the school community, but also, as Mr. Neef alluded to earlier today, also classes that are virtual as well. And we do have some students who are enrolled in some online AP courses as well to make sure we're providing even more opportunities for those students. Again, in the comparison between 2016 and 2017, 96% of our students scored three or higher. Three is the score that many colleges and universities will allow students to take credit for courses or allow students not to have to take remedial courses. So, three is often the score that students are working towards. Five is the highest level that a student is able to achieve on the AP exams. And last year, we had 132 students score at a three or a higher. Within the percentage of students who scored, you'll just see that breakdown of the 50% and the 61% within the last academic year. So, then, we took it and we broke it down by each of the AP courses that are currently offered. And Global just talks about all of the students who are currently enrolled within the AP. And again, as Mr. Neef spoke to earlier, not only are we competing with the global scores, but we are competing with ourselves just to ensure that each year, we're able to review these scores and determine what to do to increase. I had a conversation because we saw a dip this year from where we were as it relates to the history exams. And one of the things we noticed is that we had, previous to that, had a spike in scores. So, we're, we're, again, monitoring the wave to determine and we reviewed. College Board does provide not only the teacher who is assigned to the AP, but also myself and to the department chairs with a breakdown of how students did so we can determine what specific concepts students did not do well on within the AP exam so that we can take that information. And while we don't have those same students taking the course, it does allow us to impact our instruction to better prepare for the students who are going to be within that course for this academic year. So, we have already started to address the decrease that we're seeing. But as you will note, in the years previous, there's been an increase and a decrease where there's been that constant wave that has happened as well.
And the European History piece, which I'm, I'm not even sure if Mr. Lamro remembers this. European history, I'm sorry that I have the benefit of having too much information about this. European history, up until, it was either 2011 or 2012, I'm not sure which year, we moved European history from a senior course to a sophomore course. So, those 100%. And if you went back again, European history well before that, you'd see a lot of times we had stu, we had 100% of our students scoring three or higher because they were seniors taking the exam. We made a decision that we wanted to offer an AP course for sophomores. And European history, it's really a mix. That, it's unusual. If you look at AP courses, most schools offer the AP course the same grade. Like US History AP is juniors. Everyone takes AP US. You take A push as a junior, that's what you do. Every school probably, I shouldn't say every school, through most schools. European history is a mix. Some take a 10th, some take an 11th, some take a 12th. We made a decision to offer a 10th grade AP. I think you've seen the decline in the scores since we made that decision because this is the first time students are ever taking that test. And they're also comparing themselves against other students who are taking that course in 11th and 12th grade. Where, when we did take it as seniors, our, our score average there was consistently on the, more on the higher end. So, I think that, that's why you see that break for European. But that's a, but also, we had that year, we had 81% score three or higher, which is great as sophomores. And we, and a lot of times, we have a lot of students taking this course because it's their first opportunity to take an AP. This course is generally enrolled between 20, 20 and 25 students.
Absolutely.
So, because it's their first, first toe, first dip of their toes into an AP course. So, I think that's why you see that big drop from the European history.
What about the American history?
Uh, the American history, that is, the A push, juniors always take A push. I don't know if I have as, as a greater specific answer as to why we've seen a change in the performance of the AP history class. Mr. Lamro, the teacher's been the same teacher for many, several years, actually. So, it's not a, it's not a teacher change. And so, I think he himself, that teacher's looking at why we've seen that kind of up and down the last couple of years. So, I don't have more detailed information as to why that one is more up and down.
And as we move into the English courses, we will see again, as Ms. Neef mentioned earlier, that we have the classes broken down by the 11th grade and the 12th grade year. So, our students are able to, again, they are currently outperforming. We did have a discussion regarding looking at the English literature and determining why last year, well, two years ago, there was a dip. And we weren't really able to see that. But one of the things the teacher did note is that there was beginning to be a decline if we look over three years out and that at this point, we've been starting to make a trajectory forward. So, what they're looking to do is they actually, the teacher in the English Lit class actually shared this information with the current students to share with them so that they can be aware of, again, the fluctuation that has increased within this last year to make sure that we can continue to maintain that positive upward or at least maintain them the scores that we have at this point. Moving into our math information. For the statistics course, this is one of what many of the students have shared from me in, as I walk through the building, is one of the most difficult courses that they take. And we started to look at what was happening over the past two years because we went from, as you can notice, students who were scoring at a level of 75 to students down to 48. So, it's really trying to determine what has impacted the percentage by that amount. Statistically, there, the teachers, no pun intended, are stating that it's really about the students' levels as they were ready to enter those courses. Also, we are moving into a point where students now have the requirement of four years of mathematics that are required. So, many students, as they are selecting the courses that they will take, many of them were not enrolled in that level of math because it was something that they were self-selecting. But now, with having the requirements, they're finding that many of the students are selecting to take different math courses and that the students who are taking on the challenge, because the phenomenal thing with AP courses is that a student is able to self-select. So, there are no requirements to say that if a student believes as though they're willing to work hard, that they're not able to enter into a particular course. We provide the opportunity for any student who is willing to work hard towards achieving the goal.
And AP Calculus, we've had for a long time and it's a hard course. And we've seen that fluctuation and we don't have great answers for the fluctuation in AP Calculus, though I want to give credit for 2017 because that 82% scoring a three or higher is the highest in the history of the school, to my knowledge, since the course has been offered. Those students just did a tremendous job. So, that, that, to have 82% of your AP Calculus students score a three or higher is tremendous. And it was, it was a good sample size. I think it was a class of.
It was a full size of about 18.
Yep. So, it was a full-size class. So it was a full-size class. Statistics, just a historical piece on that as well. Same timeframe, 2011, 2012, we began to offer statistics as a full-time course. Prior to that, it was either a combo course. It was called Honors Statistics and with an AP option. And students could choose to take the AP exam. So the, the averages there are kind of skewed because it may only be, represent a couple of students. So maybe only three stu-, so 2012 may have only been three students who took it and all three got a three or higher. In 2011, it may only be five students who took it. So it was, there was an AP option, but it wasn't its own AP course. So that began around that same timeframe with 2011, 2012, where it became its own course with a full enrollment of 20 some odd students. So, and I think even back as far as, at one point, we were offering statistics as like a, now I don't know the breakdown on this timeline-wise, but statistics has grown. It started out just we, it was actually an independent study. And people took the AP course as an independent study and there may be one or two students did it. And then we did Honors Statistics with an AP option. And then very, within the last five or six years now, we've done AP Stats as its own separate course. So I think that plays a little bit into the flexulation of the scores in statistics.
And we've also seen an increase between the year before and this year as well. While a small increase, we do take that because we know the level of difficulty for both of those math components. And as we move into the science, it is my understanding, and Mr. Neef, please share the history.
No, I don't have a lot of history on either. Looking at the future scores, they're all, there's no additional history pieces that you may not be aware of.
I know that for the years that you do not have any information populated, we did not have students who tested within those particular AP exams. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. We did not forget to include the statistics. Again, looking at the growth over the timeframe, again, there was some question with environmental science because we have had the same instructor. Biology is something that we did have one of the instructors leave and then we had an additional instructor who was there for just a period of a year. And then we now have a third instructor who is currently there and some of the parameters that we are putting into place to support those students. We were happy to see that the growth over two years has increased exponentially as you look at the AP biology. And we want to continue to have that upward trend. And we are planning right now and going through the interview process because the teacher who is now taking on, this would be the third instructor in the third year, is currently going to be taking maternity leave. So we definitely want to make sure that we select a candidate who is able to continually, continuously support those students and ensure that they are ready for those exams later in the spring. And I've been working with the teacher leader and she has also taken on, which she teaches one of the AP courses, but she will be helping to ensure that those students have what they need in order to be successful. So I wanted to make sure that that was noted, that we want to continue to see that increase within biology, as you saw us moving from 18 to 53%. As we move into psychology, this year, we, due to the numbers in, increasing in other courses, we did move from having two sections of AP Psychology to one section to ensure that the other classes that were not at the AP level, that the classes would not have too large of a student-to-teacher ratio. This is a class that students have multiple opportunities. Next year, we will revisit this to determine if we should be bringing back the second component of AP Psychology again. And again, we can note over two years ago, previous, that there was a dip. However, we've started to see that increase and some of that is due to the high percentage because we had so many students within those two courses versus some of the other courses that only had one section for students to take. That that was also impacting the reference points just because we had so many additional students who were going to be included within that percentage. And as you can see, this is the first year we've captured anything for physics, so stay tuned. Hopefully, there will be growth. Some of the things that we, we definitely want the community to just be aware of is that we're always seeking to increase the amount of students who are involved in AP courses because it truly allows them to set themselves apart and to be exposed to the collegiate level of a course. Colleges really value students who are willing to take on that level of rigor. However, we don't want any student to feel as though I'm a student who may be placed in a particular course and I'm only achieving at a level of a C. This really is to expose them to some additional options and to let them see if this is something that I'm really passionate about. We find that many of our students who are interested in moving into the medical field do exceptionally well within the biology course because it's something that they want to do as they move forward. And it really allows them to dig in deep to the information as they move forward. So our, really our push to the community is for those students, as they're selecting courses, and I know we're a ways off right now, but as they're thinking about courses and if parents are listening to this, really encourage your children to take those opportunities that are available. While we are a small district, we provide a, quite a bit of opportunities and it allows us to set ourselves apart to make sure our students have the best options. And if there's a course they're interested in and we don't have a teacher located within the building, we are able to offer them through online opportunities as well for students. So we really want them to continuously challenge us to provide more opportunities within the AP courses that are available.
That sounds like a soundbite for our new marketing campaign.
I am part of the committee. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right, so moving on, I'd like to welcome Michelle Taylor and Pat Tobin. Michelle is our director for, is director of literacy, but also has the role of being our ESL coordinator. And Pat is our ESL teacher. So they're going to kind of give us an update in terms of where we are with our ELL students. In the past couple of years, we've seen an increase in the number of students who qualify as English language learners within the district. I believe currently we have 14 students with that classification. And ultimately, I think, part of, part of the point of this evening's presentation is really twofold in my mind. One, I think that Michelle and Pat have just done an outstanding job with that population and I want to recognize that. We actually had a little bit of a discussion of having this be a recognition of Pat and her superior work within the role. And, and then, then it became, well, we also have to have an informal discussion of what's happening within the district with that. So we, so we want to celebrate Pat and the work she's doing in the role for the committee and for the community. But then we also want to recognize that there's a reality piece of, we've seen an increase in the number of students who qualify for these services. And that's an important thing for the community, for the community to know and for the community to know because it may have budgetary impacts as we go forward into this year. And we may have to consider adding a part-time position at the middle high school to service our students because right now, Pat is really servicing everyone district-wide. And maybe it's going to grow to a point that it's going to be beyond her, beyond her capabilities. I don't know if, I don't know if anything is beyond her capabilities, but beyond her capabilities to serve in that role. So please welcome Michelle and Pat, who are going to kind of give an overview of the program as it currently exists within the Carver schools.
Okay, great. Good evening. So thank you for having us. So I was joking with Pat and I said that I, the English language learner approach that we have here just comes with a list of about, you know, 23 more acronyms for you guys to learn. So I'm going to make you a nice word bank with some definitions because that might help us out. So ELL is English Language Education at CES. And it should have said CPS, so I apologize for that. So that's okay. All right, so this is Pat. She's amazing. She's our ESL teacher. She is licensed. There are currently 11 students that she's servicing and three that are in the process of being identified. This is a lovely little picture that I took of her with three of her little friends at the beginning of the school year. And I just wanted to make sure that the committee realizes that Pat is an asset beyond words. We could not be more fortunate to have someone like her work with these children and their families. She is licensed as an early childhood educator, a special education teacher, a reading specialist, and an ESL teacher. That is truly remarkable. And I just am so grateful every day that she is here for us and for these kids. So thank you.
I know, I'm totally.
No, 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 you're amazing. So I'm going to give you like a quick little brief overview of what English language education kind of looks like. And then Pat's going to talk to you about sort of what the service delivery looks like from her angle. Okay, so, oh, I cannot read that from here. All right, so basically, what, what happened was in, in about 2012, the state launched what's called the Retail Initiative. Retail is another acronym, stands for Rethinking Equity in Teaching English Language Learners. And the Retail Initiative came along with many changes to assessment, curriculum, identification of students, and then licensure and training requirements for educators. This is just a slide that I got straight from the DESE website that just talks about what types of tasks were in place previous, prior to 2012, and then what retail, how retail changed the face of instruction for English language learners in Massachusetts. So prior to, oh, thank you, sorry, I'm struggling to read. That's a nice big screen, thank you.
We can see.
We can see. So prior to 2012, it was a choice for an educator to take courses in sheltered English immersion instruction. And now with Retail, it is mandatory if you have a student in your, in your classroom. The types of professional development changed, the types of licensing and professional development points that teachers have to earn changed. It is also now part of the state mandate that administrators that observe and evaluate teachers of English language learners also obtain the SEI endorsement. The, the, the testing for teachers changed. There, there wasn't, there was not an MTEL in place prior to 2012 and now there is. And it has become part of the standard practice for educator preparation programs at the undergraduate level. When we go to hire, it's one of the, one of the criteria we hope to see in a candidate. And we have to help support current staff as they work toward SEI endorsement. Let's see, so the Retail Initiative is also sort of a joint force initiative between the Department of Justice, the Office for Civil Rights, and individual State Departments of Education. Thank you. So what is sheltered, oh, now I have to figure out how to advance this. So Sheltered English Immersion is, it, it considers, it takes into account several factors. One is basically the classroom climate. So that's the physical arrangement of the classroom to promote conversation between our English language learning students and our typical English proficient peers. It also promotes the idea of making sure that those students have access to the curriculum through visuals and auditory supports. Sheltered English Immersion incorporates language objectives that layer all of the content objectives. So a teacher has to really carefully consider the type of vocabulary and the way that they're going to deliver vocabulary instruction and other components of the content when they are teaching an English language learner because they have to consider their English language proficiency level and then also their developmental level and the content objectives when they're putting together a lesson. So it is more complex. Ultimately, great sheltered English immersion instruction is great teaching. And it's an opportunity for teachers to really make sure that all the learning opportunities include direct explicit instruction, but also some modeling and collaboration with students. Okay, so Massachusetts joined the WEDA consortium and they are one of about 39 states that is a part of the consortium. The good thing is that it gives us access to a lot of wonderful tools that we can use as resources as we build our program here in Carver. Ultimately, what we, WEDA stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. But what it really sort of stands for is an assets-based approach to English language learner education. It's really about being mindful of what the child and the family has to offer our community based on their cultural background and their gifts as, as bilingual citizens and how we can bring the community together to really kind of help everybody be, I don't know, just be better all around, you know? Okay, so do you want to add anything to that?
Well, no, it's just that, that growth mindset. It's taking them where they are and moving them forward and acknowledging where they are as being unique learners and incredibly special learners because they're learning our language and learning content. They're working twice as hard as we are.
Right. One of our, I think, shared favorite things about WEDA is the way that they've written their standards and they're called can-do descriptors. And that really is sort of the bread and butter of their whole philosophy. And it's just that idea that it's not about what they should be able to do, but it's about what they can do, what they can offer and kind of meeting them where they are so that we can create an engaged, language-rich community of learners. Okay. I'm not going to read all of this to you. I just wanted you to know that there is a link embedded in the presentation. And then this, this next slide just talks about how WEDA did come up with English language proficiency standards and that there are sort of five elements to that. Social and instructional language, the language of language arts, which sounds crazy, but it's like the language of reading comprehension and vocabulary instruction and all of that. So it's the language objectives that overlay that type of content, the language of mathematics, the language of science, and the language of social studies. So if you think about being a content teacher and then adding that whole layer of language objectives, it is a tall order. And then this chart just sort of shows you how WEDA has come up with a set of tools for us. We have the standards, we have performance definitions to help us really kind of align instruction with what the students can do. We have those can-do descriptors which are really valuable for not just the educators in the classrooms, but also when you're communicating with families about what the students are able to do and how they are making progress using the can-do descriptor language, I think is really valuable there. And then WEDA has designed some rubrics that are essential for scoring student work.
Did you want me to show the can-do?
Sure. There's, there's too many for me to have printed or included in this. They're, they're whole booklets. So this is just grades four through five. It's almost like a whole set of standards for each grade level.
So listening, speaking.
Mm-hmm. It's broken down into the domains of communication.
Listening, speaking, reading, and writing.
So that's what the next slide basically just says is that students' language proficiency skills are assessed annually. It's an assessment tool called the Access Test. It is designed by WEDA and adopted by the state of Massachusetts. And we assess students along six levels of proficiency. One entering being your newcomers that are really just being immersed in our culture with the English language and really kind of trying to find their, find their way through. And then all the way through to level six, which is reaching. And if a student develops language proficiency between around a level five and a six, then you know that they are socially capable and socially fluent with English as well as academically fluent with English. Okay, so this is, I wanted Pat to be able to talk a little bit more about what this looks like. I'll, I'll just say the bullets and then you can just fill in the gaps. So basically, what we've designed with guidance from the State Department, of course, is a combination of push-in and pull-out services. We do, Pat does a wonderful job of integrating and incorporating English-speaking peers into her instructional sessions. You know, all of the objectives and target lessons are appropriate for the English-speaking peers as they are appropriate for the ESL students that she is servicing. Pat is an amazing resource for teachers. So many of our teachers have gone to her and asked for different things like if they are taking, taking one of the SEI endorsement courses or if they have a student and they're just not sure sort of where to begin or where to go or how to communicate with families. You know, everybody reaches out to Pat. Pat's their go-to. And for example, when we have parent-teacher conferences coming up, now that we have 11, between 11 and 14 students, that's a lot of conferences for Pat to attend. So she's trying to schedule her time to make sure she's available at all of those conferences. And then if we need an interpreter, she's helping to arrange those services as well. So any documentation, any newsletters, any homework assignments, all of the families have the option to receive written communication. have the option to receive written communication in their native language. It is a choice, and so, that's part of what Pat tries to maintain, is who would like communication in English, who would like communication in their native language, and whatever that language is, we have to find a way to communicate. She's been incredibly resourceful, using online tools and apps and things like that to communicate on the spot.
Google Translate.
Google's great, isn't it?
Google Translate. Although, it doesn't translate accurately, you have to be very careful about that.
Yes.
But it's an attempt, and parents appreciate the attempt that we make. But the way, I didn't see this before, but the way I see my job is kind of three broad categories, and I kind of made them up. But one is direct instruction of students. They're learning English, and they need to be taught how to, you know, how are they listening, how are they speaking, how are they reading, how are they writing? Direct instruction. And I do that push-in and pull-out, depending on the situation and the child. And because of my background in special education, I always look at everybody individually, and ELL students are very similar in that there is no two ELL students. You can have two speaking the same language at different levels, so you have to really treat everybody differently. So, it depends on what they need, what I'm going to do. So, it's the direct instruction of the students, and it might be me going into a classroom, which I've done, like tomorrow I'm going to be in first grade, they did scarecrows today, and we're going to be writing sentences about that. So, I'll be supporting those three students, but the rest of the kids in the classroom too, so it doesn't look like I'm helping them, I'm helping everybody. Because really, in first grade, we're all learning the language. Nobody's an expert at writing a sentence down there.
Yeah, that's very true.
So, they fit right in, so it's perfect. The other piece that I see is the supporting them in learning the content. They have to learn English, but they have to learn the content, and it's very challenging, and so we have to make that content accessible to them. So, they call it comprehensible input. We have to get it at a level where there's where they are, and we deliver it just slightly above where they are so that they can reach it. And so, I have to work really collaboratively with the teachers to know where they are, and then you're talking about kindergarten up through seventh grade now, with rotating schedules on different days. I'm trying to figure out where everybody is, but so that I can pre-teach vocabulary, pre-teach the spelling skills, have conversations with the kids ahead of time so that they can go into the classroom and then have conversations with their peers and understand how to do that. So, it's working collaboratively with the teachers. So, I've redone my schedule a number of times this year, trying to figure out when's the best time to see students. So, that's a big piece of it. And then, they need support too, because we have the SEI endorsed teachers, but it's important to have them be able to, you know, they have a whole classroom to focus on, and I have to support them in supporting these kids that are still learning the language too, so they need a lot of support. So, it might look like modeling. Sometimes I'll go in and I'll do a lesson with the whole class with my ELL students in mind, but it's, everybody's benefiting from that. And then, the next piece, which has really been the most challenging piece, I think, because the other two we've really been trained in, but the last piece is the kind of advocacy and the support of the families. And so, some of our families come from different socioeconomic backgrounds. We've had some challenges with economics, we've had challenges with immigration, so trying to support these families in how to make choices for their child in being able to live, me trying to figure out what the resources are that are available, and then getting them to, getting the resources in them together. So, that's been a challenge this year too. So, those are the three areas.
And she does an amazing job with all of them. And sometimes, it's also helping some of our families either find or access resources, but also assimilate to the culture. We've had parents of our students ask where they can go to learn English, and so they're looking to us as the resource for that type of information. And again, since our population has grown exponentially in a very short period of time, we both sort of feel like we are learning as we go with some of this, so it has been an interesting journey. Okay, so, I wanted to think a little bit about sort of what are the challenges and implications of our current model, so that we can be really thoughtful in moving forward. Identifying students that need services is, we do get some guidance from the state, but it is a very subjective process, and Pat and I work really hard to try to make sense of it most of the time. We have obviously a growing number of students that are in need of these services, and believe it or not, we have an aging population. So, it was one thing when we were doing home visits for three-year-olds, and we knew that they were incoming ESL students, but now some of these students are aging out of Pat's service delivery license, and that's a real implication that we, as a district, need to be prepared for, because we will need to hire someone with the correct license for service delivery in grades seven through twelve. So, that's going to be something, it's not a choice, it's a state law, we have to do it. The other piece is cultural sensitivity training. Again, I feel often that we're learning as we go, but there are just small moments that will come up that we maybe didn't think about, you know, that we haven't, in a situation that we haven't encountered before, and we, on the spot, have to make a judgment call or figure out how to handle it. But also, being aware that every family comes to us with a different set of backgrounds and a different set of assets, and we have to be sensitive to what their culture guides them in their belief system, and we have to be, we have to recognize that, acknowledge that, and then also communicate effectively so that we can all basically just be on the same team for the child and for the child's success. So, it is a very complex role. The other thing that's difficult for, what we have found is very difficult for many of our families in Carver, is just community resources and support. We don't have a lot of public transportation options, we don't have a lot of rental properties, we don't have a lot of, it's difficult sometimes for people who are new to our area to find work and to find everything. So, we've had to do a lot of just kind of grassroots digging around and talking to anybody, and a lot of just research to try to find what, how we can best support these families. So, that has been interesting. That's a challenge that we face. And the implications for those challenges are things like staffing, which I mentioned, and a budget. We don't, there is no line item for this. We don't have enough students at this point to qualify for some of the federal grant money that's available for ESL students. I do think eventually we will have the population so that we will be able to apply for that money, but right now, we don't, but yet we still have between eleven and fourteen students and families that require us to act on their behalf. So, that's challenging. Curriculum and assessment, we're constantly trying to figure that out. We have tools in place, and we definitely make sure that they are aligned with the standards. However, as Pat said, you can have two students from the same, you know, language background, but that doesn't mean that they have the same content, sets of content knowledge, school experiences, or background knowledge to help support their learning. And so, it's not the type of thing that you can easily use a ready-made program for. It's a lot of design-on-the-spot type of instruction. So, technology, I think, has been an incredible resource, using the iPad to pull up images to help support vocabulary, help to provide contextual background information when we're talking about certain subjects. That's been really helpful.
Yes.
I don't know if you want to say anything else about that?
No, it was going back to the community resources. You might wonder how we got involved in that, but it shows up with children not coming to school, because parents are in crises. And so, then we end up problem-solving, trying to figure out how we can help the families, because it impacts the kids.
And then, the other piece is teacher training. Again, as a district, it's our responsibility to make sure that we're providing opportunities for the teachers to earn the PDPs that are required for licensure, and part of that means, you know, developing our skills as resident experts to be able to offer guidance, direction, support, and actual professional development. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or try.
I had a kind of a question, but a couple of comments also. Thank you for what you do, and I think one thing that, you know, you kind of alluded to, I think one of the things with English ESL students is that English is not the language at home. So, you're trying to work with them at school, and when they go home, that's not the common language that's used there either, which makes it harder for you to progress with that.
It's harder for parents to help with homework.
Right.
What they're getting in school is what they're getting.
Yeah, and I think that's why you're getting a lot of those parents searching for that help with English there also. But I think one of the things, I guess I had a question, when you have budgeting for interpreters, it seems like this day and technological age, there must be some kind of technological interpreter out there that's something, I mean, you have Alexa and all these other things that are out there, that there's got to be something where students could talk in and translate that way, with something that could be used as opposed to...
The only problem with that is, then you're talking into a device, because we use this during parent conferences, and you've got the teacher looking down the device to make sure the device is saying exactly what you're saying and not looking at the parent.
Right.
You know, so you lose that personal contact.
And the non-verbal communication skills, which again, that goes back to the cultural sensitivity piece. There are some cultures where, you know, eye contact means different things, and so, and there's a million other sorts of non-verbal communication skills involved in language and related to culture that we have to constantly try to be aware of and then respond to appropriately. So, it is a very complex thing.
We've tried many methods.
Yes.
We've tried relatives translating, which...
Which has had varying degrees of success.
It was adorable, because we were talking, the relative was looking, but nothing was getting translated.
Yeah, she's just nodding, and we're like, okay.
We learned to our mistakes.
Yes. And then, there's also, the thing that I find interesting is, there are definitely sort of companies out there, for lack of a better term, that offer translation and interpretation services, but if they don't have a background in education, and you, as a teacher, are trying to present information in a professional way, and that person doesn't have a background in education, sometimes that idea of something being lost in translation is happening right there, and you're not, you don't even know, because you don't necessarily know the language. So, it is very complex.
Well, and I guess for a teacher to be SEI certified doesn't mean they understand that language either.
Oh, no, no.
It just means they know how to present English in a way.
Absolutely. The sheltered English immersion is really about, like I said, attaching language objectives and that idea of cultural sensitivity to a typical content lesson. So, it really has nothing to do with being bilingual, whereas being bilingual is such a gift, and it's something we want to promote for our students that do come to us with a primary language other than English, yet, you know, getting there is definitely an uphill climb for us at this point. So, that's it, yay, Pat.
I have a question. What is the threshold for us to qualify for federal funding?
I'm not sure, I just know that eleven is, I mean, I shouldn't say that I'm not sure, I just know that it's not eleven.
We're far off.
We're far off, yeah.
It's a percentage, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a percentage.
And it's a small amount of money that's ever generated, and it goes to Springfield, Fall River.
Much larger districts with a much greater population. But I mean, in all honesty, as I work through some of this stuff, and Pat as well, we do reach out to those other districts for guidance and advice, tips, any, anything that we can get. We call around all the time and just contact other districts that have a little bit more experience and resources available, and ask them, well, you know, how do you source this tool, or have you experienced this situation, and how did you handle it, and things like that? So, it's, everyone, you know, it's education, so everybody's willing to share, that's what we do. But it is definitely, it is a, like I said, a very complex task, and Pat does it with grace and expertise, and I admire you a great deal, so, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you both, Ms. Scott.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, lady.
Thank you for your computer. I didn't realize, that was like a sad moment for me. Wait a minute, why can't I see that? Thank you.
I think actually, maybe on that same topic, could you provide us with some more information from the state, the state requirements on ESL learners, and being, the law that you referenced?
In terms of qualifying?
Qualifying.
And Michelle and Pat, I don't know if you want to come back up, so that, so anyways, just a specific question about how do students actually qualify?
And what the state, you mentioned the state law, I'm sorry, I should have, I just thought...
No, no, that's okay, absolutely. So, there is a, there is a set of guidelines, and that is what it's called. It's called a guidance document and guidelines. It starts, step one is really at the intake or registration process, and families complete something called the Home Language Survey, which is a document that was designed by the state. We use their exact tool. When the family fills it out, if it indicates that a second language is spoken in the home, or that the child has a primary language other than English, that basically is the first, yes, the first, sorry, the first indication, first trigger that we have to speak with the family, speak with the child, just to get a quick gauge. And then, the next step is there is a formal evaluation process. So, there is a tool, again, because we are a state that is a part of the WEDA consortium, we use the WEDA tools. So, there is, it used to be called the WAPT, but now it is called the WEDA Screener.
That's right.
And this was just in the last few years that changed. So, we use the WEDA Screener, which is an online assessment. We administer that, and then we use a rubric to examine the results. There is definitely some subjectivity in the scoring piece that is just inherent in the types of subtest tasks. We're trying to evaluate listening, speaking, so, and writing. Reading can be slightly more black and white when you go to assess it, but writing, speaking, and listening are much more challenging to score. And again, we are given a rubric, but it is, there's still some subjectivity to it. So, that is a piece that sort of sometimes weighs on us a little bit.
Yes, and I was going to say, the younger you go, the harder it is too, because it's all developmental, and they're learning language anyway. So, we're careful, and we usually take teachers' observations, data that teachers give us, before we go in and assess. And usually, we delay it. We delay it a while, so we see how they perform in the classroom before we go in, and, you know, because sometimes you can tease out special needs from that, sometimes language issues, just sometimes exposure to the classroom, so you have to kind of wait before you do that assessment.
Right, you can't do it the first couple of weeks of school. You definitely have to give them time to really be comfortable in the classroom, be comfortable in their surroundings, be comfortable with who you are, and then you can administer the assessment. And then, after the assessment, we do have to look at the results, the Home Language Survey, teacher observations. Pat does a lot of just one-on-one talking and interactions with them to get a sense of their language proficiency levels.
Right, we have actually a situat, well, no, it's not a situation, but right now, we're dealing with a couple of students that we haven't formally evaluated yet, but from, and in the screening, they were initially screened out, but then feedback from teachers were, can you get in here and look at these kids, because I feel like there's a language issue going on. So, of course, I'm doing that, and I believe we should support, you know, positive intent, we should support these kids, and then tease out what the issue really is. So, we're just collecting data right now, so...
We're really putting an RTI sort of lens on it, which is response to intervention, so we're trying to give the students multiple opportunities to show what they know in terms of reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and then we use the data in conjunction with the teacher observations to come up with...
How we move forward.
How we move forward.
So, I'll sign...
There is hard and fast criteria in terms of the assessment. There are the six language proficiency levels, one through six. If a student doesn't score a five or a six, you absolutely are supposed to, we have to provide services.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to be blunt.
Yeah.
I'll be the bad guy here.
That's okay.
Are these families, where do they come from? Are these families legal immigrants, or are they undocumented?
We have a variety of situations.
Okay, I was just curious, when people hear that there's a state law that we, that schools have to accept.
It is a state law.
I want them to understand that, because honestly, if I was a parent out there, and I heard of all the budget cuts that have happened, and we have to now educate people who aren't here legally, which is not the kid's fault, you know, but it's, but I would be, I would kind of, I would, I'm just being honest, that I would be kind of a little miffed about that, when my own kids might be, you know, having a problem with their own educational experience. So, but as I said, it's not about the kids themselves, you know, so I...
That's why public education is open to all right now.
Right, yeah, it's not, it's not a determination. It's not part of the admission process to make a determination.
And all of the, all of the students are legal, so...
Okay, okay, gotcha.
The students are all, yes, we do know that.
Okay, okay, terrific.
And we... And we.
No, I was, just a state law aspect.
It is, yeah, it is a law.
I wanted.
Actually, I didn't know what I was gonna say. Sorry, thank you for reminding me.
Okay.
Ultimately, the state comes in and reviews us as a school district every, I think it's five years.
Six years.
Six years, okay, thank you. So we were last audited for our English Language Education.
Two thousand fourteen.
Program in two thousand fourteen. And at that time, we were not in compliance with the state law. We did not have a licensed ESL teacher. We also didn't have, I think we had two students at the time, well, first we had zero students, then we had two students. And even with two students, it was very difficult to support a position. Even just the number of hours of instruction required through the state law, it was just very difficult to even find someone willing to work regardless of the budget implications. It was just a very difficult position to fill. So we piecemealed it as best we could. And during the, during that whole year following that initial review by the state, I had to submit monthly progress reports to show them what we were doing to work toward compliance. And my name was on all of that and, I mean, it was, it was very, it could be very stressful at times. And I had to prove that we were doing all that we could to make sure that those students were being adequately serviced because otherwise it's an Office for Civil Rights violation.
And from a budget perspective, I mean, so we, we said that we have a concern here that we have fourteen students, they're going into the middle high school. So it does become a staffing issue, but it doesn't mean, doesn't necessarily mean we have to hire another teacher or remove a teacher, or you know, that doesn't mean we have to hire another teacher. I mean, Pat was in our system and we encourage her to go through the process of becoming certified.
Qualified.
Right, so we could have a qualified teacher who becomes certified at the middle high school, who becomes part of their role to provide, provide those services. So it doesn't necessarily mean that it's additional staff.
Right, that's exactly what happened with Pat. She was a reading specialist and we slowly sort of begged.
Hey, I volunteer.
She volunteered. And she began servicing them and then, you know, pursued the licensure requirements and ultimately was licensed, which we were very grateful. And that was a great day for me to write that progress report to the state saying, look what's happened, you know, we've met all the criteria. And in the beginning, because we only had two students and because in all honesty, our population of ESL students really has fluctuated a great deal over the last twelve years that I've been involved in it. And so it was great to have somebody like Pat who was already here, already working as a reading specialist and then we just added that role, that piece into her daily schedule. We're at a point now where that piece has taken over her daily schedule and we're just very fortunate that we already had her here working for us. So like Scott said, I mean, ultimately, from a literacy director's perspective, we at one point had a part-time reading specialist at the middle high school. I really do hope that eventually someday we're able to get back to that. And I think that would be a great type of role if we could find someone who was dual-licensed or dual-certified to do reading and ESL because that would meet our needs for both Title I and ESL instruction.
And it would, it would help, I mean, to go a long way, I think, that if the adults, if there was programs for the adults, I know there's ESL for adults out there somewhere. But in years past, I mean, to come to this country, you had to know the language before you came. And that would make it a lot easier on your end, obviously, to educate the kids.
Fortunately.
But that's not the way it is anymore.
I do believe the Plymouth Public Library offers a series and there's lots of digital options and other options that we've been able to. I'm just grateful when we have a resource that we can share with families, which is why I think Pat's amazing because she has gone so far above and beyond, not just the call of duty, but her schedule. She has been so incredibly flexible with servicing these students in school and out of school just to improve their everyday quality of lives and really, again, just help them to become the citizens that they want to be. So it's.
And my questions weren't in any way.
No, no, that's hey.
Yeah, upon you or.
Ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our two projects, I'll be quick in these quick updates on where we stand on both of them. First, update on the Excel Repair's project. So our goal last time, as I said, that when I come to October meeting, I hope to come and say that the project is completed. The project is still not yet completed. Right now, the roof and the boilers are completed, so the roof is done, the boiler system is done. The boiler was actually on and running and we had a cold weekend, so the, it's up, up and operating and, and doing well. But where we stand at this time in terms of what's left, as of this morning, there were eleven doors that still need to be installed. And there were nineteen windows in the library media center that still need to be installed. And there was one window in the back of the building and a stairwell that still needs to be installed. And I believe one classroom window is still waiting installation. Today, they were working on the library media windows. I believe five of them were going in tonight, so that number will be down to fourteen by the end of today. At this time, our project manager is projecting that there are fourteen workdays needed to complete and finish the project, which includes the interior finish work around some of the windows, installing those windows and doors. The windows have just been a little bit problematic. The condition at the metal paneling is just a unique condition for them to work with. So the way the windows were designed originally is just a design that they don't, haven't, the company hasn't typically seen. Obviously, they're aware of that, but there, there becomes the reality of when they've come out to install the window, it's just been a difficult condition for them to work with and it's just going much slower than they anticipated. I mean, the windows are gonna look great, they're gonna be in, they're gonna have screens, they're gonna be fine. And they've, they've come up with a, they're getting better at it each day because as they do it each day, they're getting better at it. But it's just not, as I said, it's just not a typical condition that they used to work with. And so even, even the library in particular, those long, those long big windows in the library and the metal paneling is just a very unusual design for a window setup. It's just causing a little bit of struggle. It's the same window company that put in the rest of the windows in the building and when they put the windows into the brick fascia, there was a more typical window, those, they did really well with those and they flew in because it was just a much more typical condition that they worked with. So that, that's why it's been a little bit slow.
Will this delay cost us anything more?
Nope, so there's not, right now, there is not, there's not additional costs at this time. You know, ultimately, this is their responsibility to, to get it done. They, they, they bid the project to install the windows. They knew the exact number of windows they needed to install. They're, they're installing the number of windows at the price they said they would install them in.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not any condition where they're saying, this was an unforeseen condition that's required to change. Now, we've had, we've had a couple of change orders as we've gone along with the projects that we've talked about. You know, we painted the front of the metal paneling, we did some pieces where there were change orders. But the delay itself is not a change. It's just the reality, it's taking them a little longer than they anticipated. So no, there's not, there's not a cost implication to the delay in the work. So, you know, right now, they're projecting all fourteen days to complete the work. I do think that once the windows are in the, excuse me, once the windows are in the library in the front, because in reality, that's still the front of the buildings. When you drive up, you still feel like it's a total work in progress. But once those, once those windows in the library, I think it's, I think it's gonna have a nice overall look to the building. The metal paneling being white, the new signage, the new front entryways are in. People tend to like, there's a little more glass in them, a little more open space. So people liking those, those new front entryways. And I think when the project's finally completed, the, the front of the building, the entrance to the building is gonna have a nice look. And, and most importantly, we're gonna have a heating system that's gonna work much more efficiently. A boiler system that's gonna work more efficiently, we're gonna have a roof that doesn't leak. So those, so those are, those are huge benefits.
It's been a worry for a long time though, man. It's, it's a very nice thing to see.
Yeah, the roof, the roof leaks have been a huge concern at that building for many years, for many years. So it's, it was work that needed to be done. And so, so we'll go with the same statement of, when we meet in November, hopefully I'll say that the project is completed. And the school building, there's not a lot new to report on the school building. The project, again, the project continues to move along on time and on budget. We're still, we are currently in the process of finalizing furniture and technology procurements. We talked about that a little bit last time in terms of furniture and technology. We actually, we've had one more technology, we've had one more furniture and one, one more technology meeting since the last time the committee met. We're gonna have one more of those again. So we're gonna, one more time, we're gonna look at all the furniture procurements, we're gonna look at all the technology procurements. Ruby's done an outstanding job in terms of working with the teachers involved in this process. So when we meet with the furniture consultant, there's actually a furniture book, an essence for each grade level, each space, each special ed area, each readings, the reading specialist, the ESL teacher. Every single space in the building has a little book that says, this is gonna be the furniture in your room. Teachers have been involved in that process, or I say room, but space. And we're going back to it several times. So we looked at it once, we're looking at it again, we're gonna come back another time and finalize all those pieces. So I believe we're looking at one more furniture meeting and one more technology meeting to finalize those things and have them go out to bid. So that, that's the work that the school's doing right now in terms of the project. And obviously, on the building side, you know, we just haven't run into any issues, things are moving along well. You know, I think where this project's gonna, where the rubber's gonna hit the road on this project is the end. You know, it's gonna be.
Crunch.
The crunch is gonna be them taking down the two old buildings again, the parking lot and prior to school starting. And that's when, that's when it could get a little more interesting in terms of follow-up discussions, in terms of the progress of the project.
Well, I guess a, a huge benefit to that, that still is the, the lack of the contingency fund that's been used so far, still well over ninety percent, I believe, right?
Yeah, it is. And, you know, the month, we don't have the most updated monthly reports, so this is actually the one Walter reviewed with you in September. We linked it in there. The, the September one isn't finalized yet, so we don't have the most up-to-date contingency number. But in the past month, like I said, we've said this several times, where we meet weekly to review change orders and the number of change orders that have been approved in the past month are minimal. So we're not gonna see a huge change in that, the amount of the contingency that's been used. We are gonna, we are gonna use some of the contingency for technology procurements. That number hasn't been finalized yet, but the, the technical review committee that's involved in overseeing all of the change orders, I believe the building committee, I believe the group as a whole is gonna be supportive of saying technology is a place where we need to use the contingency a little bit. You know, so they're being supportive in terms of saying, we wanna have the technology that we feel is appropriate for the building in place because it's our opportunity to do that. The MSBA reimburses up to $1,200 per student, which I believe gives us a budget of a little over $970,000. We're gonna come in a little over that most likely, but I think people are gonna be supportive of going into the contingency funding on the technology side. We know how, like I said, that the technology procurement's not finalized, so I don't have a final number on how much we're gonna go into the contingency. But we're, you know, just to give everybody a little bit of heads up, we're gonna go into a little bit of contingency for the technology purchases.
So I will say, a couple of the, a couple of the conversations and things I've heard out there are people driving by and looking at the front of the building and thinking it's kind of strange right now. And I, I think it'll be exciting as it develops and, and rolls into what the final picture will look like, how, how different it's gonna be than it is right now. And I, I have heard a couple of things about the size of the gym and, and I've tried to reiterate that some, and I think it's something maybe we need to try and, and convey that, that, you know, there was a limitation to what the MSBA was willing to do with space with that and they wouldn't, anything above and beyond that, we would have had to pay for out of pocket.
So the MSBA is very strict in terms of designing of spaces and then the number, the amount of square foot that you get for a space based on the number of students you have in a school. And there's, so there's specific requirements around all those issues. And even things like auditoriums and seating capacity, you know, and I think, I think one of the losses that people are gonna feel, not that there's gonna be a lot of losses, is, you know, the ba-, the back building has a good capacity for bleachers.
Bleachers.
The gym floor is smaller. So the gym floor in the new building is gonna be a larger gym floor than is either of the two gyms. So the, the gym floor space is gonna be larger.
There's just not.
But it's not gonna have the seating that the current gym has in the back building.
We did expand through the building committee that it was, it was one row of seats all the way down and we got it to be those foldouts.
We were doing a foldout, doing two rows, it's gonna seat about two hundred.
Yeah.
So we're gonna be able to seat about two hundred people on bleachers and that's not including people on the floor. But obviously, right now, the current bleacher structure holds more than two hundred people.
Well, what happens if you have a whole school assembly? Where would you put everybody?
It'd still be in the gym, you just can't sit on a bleacher.
Everyone's sitting on the floor.
Or there's the, the multipurpose cafeteria, there's.
The capacity of the multipurpose cafeteria is gonna be a little bit over six hundred?
Entire school, but the, we'll be allowed to allow, bring the whole building into the gym.
Yeah, they'll just, they, they sit on the floor when they tend to go in anyway. It's parents who end up in the.
The, the high part is, we might have a hard time to stand, well, deal with bringing the whole school into the, right, is bringing the whole school into the gym and parents.
Yeah.
We won't be able to do that, right. And so that, that, that's a loss, but that's just a, it's an unusual, and I, and actually, I do believe it is a little bit of an unusual thing. A nice thing that Carver's had. I don't see many elementary schools with that type of bleacher capacity. Even old elementary schools, I don't know if I see with that type of.
It was, it was a huge difference in cost to add on to be able to.
Like new bleachers?
Yeah, it was.
And the expansion of the space of the gym. It's full space because they're not.
We'd have to pay for all of it.
They're not paying, they're not reimbursing that space.
Right, yeah, a hundred percent.
It's gonna be at least a quarter, quarter bigger, right?
Right.
So, and, and in terms of playing surface, when you're actually playing games, the space is going to be better.
Full size.
Yeah, so in terms of gym classes and playing basketball games or whatever games or floor hockey or whatever you're doing through intramurals or rec, in those gyms, the gym space is gonna be better. It's that issue of bringing the community and bringing parents in for events in the bleachers. It's not, it's not gonna have the same capacity.
I like the high windows or the light coming down. I think that would.
There's gonna be a lot of light in that building, a lot of natural light. And then the only other piece I want to add to that is the, we have formed a subcommittee that's gonna begin planning for the grand opening of the school. The first meeting of the subcommittee is Monday, October 30th at 6:30 at the Make Peace Literacy Center. And that subcommittee's gonna be bringing back some ideas to the full building committee about planning for the grand opening sometime in August. And unless there's any other questions, I think we're down to, back, back to, back to recommendations and field trips. So there are, there are a group of field trips here. You can take them as a whole if you want to.
Set the bundle there.
And so these are all, these are all annual field trips that we do. New Mass Band Day is a, is a, is an event we do every year. Disney is actually for the seniors for next year. They wanna stop playing for next year, so they wanna get approval for that. Our students are going to Disney as part of the grad bash this year. I do wanna talk about the New York field trip a little bit. So we had, up to about two weeks ago, we did not have an advisor who was going forward to run a New York trip. The New York trip has been a pretty regular trip for the eighth grade. There's, over time, there's been some bumps, like after nine eleven, we didn't go to New York for three or four years. But in general, pretty much every eighth grade class has had a field trip to New York. So I wanna give some credit to Roger Tate, Mr. Tate, he's a special education teacher at the middle high school. He has stepped up and said that he's willing to be the school leader for that trip. And there's gonna be a lot of parent support in terms of putting that together as well. So I wanna thank Mr. Tate for coming forward and deciding to be the, the chaperone and the school lead for the trip. I kinda saved it a little bit because as of two weeks ago, we didn't have a school person directly involved, which would have made, obviously, the school could not have sponsored the field trip if, if no one from the school was involved. So that, that person slipped, came in and they're, they've been able to get everything together, they have buses. They actually, they were really surprised. They, traditionally, they go to the Rocket Show, to the Christmas show at Radio City Music Hall, and they were just afraid they weren't gonna be able to get tickets at this point, but they were. They already get tickets for the whole group, so they were excited about that. And so again, I just wanna thank Mr. Tate for stepping up and, and continuing that trip for our eighth grade students. And then a tenth grade trip to Newport, Rhode Island to go to the mansions during the Christmas season, holiday season. So those, those are all pretty traditional trips that we've done, so I would support all of them.
I would accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to bundle all four field trips together as one.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I've been to the Breakers down in Newport at Christmas time.
Beautiful.
Everyone should see that at least once.
Reports from the school committee. Ladies, gentlemen, anything?
Yes, I have a couple of things. One thing I wanted to share, the Carver Recreation Committee is having their first annual Halloween fair. It's on October 21st from 12 to 2:00 PM at the Carver Middle School Cafeteria. It's for children aged three to 10. The costumes are welcome. They're gonna have face painting, music games, raffles, food and drinks. Admission is $3 a person or $10 a family. Sounds like it's gonna be a, a great time, so I wanted to mention that in case people are looking for daytime inside Halloween opportunity. And then I was also speaking with some of the folks at YIPAC and they wanted to express their gratitude for the use of the space and then also for Dave Seedendorf, for your sharing, I guess, his services with them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank everyone out in the community that came out this last weekend, yesterday actually, Sunday, for our second annual fill it up Carver Food Drive over at Shredlift Park. It was a big success and I appreciate.